Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for coming. We have a lot of faces here. Really happy to have you as we end, we get ready to have some of our final board meetings of the year. I'd like to call for the following individuals to please recite for us the Pledge of Allegiance, Mission, Vision Statement. And that would be Oliver Shamtov, Nora Nick Farjam, Yael Kalian, Remy Javidzad, Matthew Hanasab, Rubens Romana Dowd. And you guys could please stand up here. Thank you. Okay, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All together now. I pledge my allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now, Mission, Vision, Values.
Hello, everyone. The BHUSD Mission Statement of Educational Excellence and the Vision Statement of our students will realize their full potential to thrive with integrity in a complex and changing world.
The Community Pledge. The BHUSD community acknowledges that in order to achieve educational excellence, we must act with integrity and respect to each other in our learning environment. Therefore, I pledge to model civil behavior and respect in all communications and in public while maintaining a culture of honesty, listen and acknowledge differences of opinion. Do my part to protect an inclusive culture in which we honor the relationship between all school community members and honor our learning environment, including how we take care of our schools and personal property. By holding ourselves and each other accountable to this pledge at all times, we will promote an environment of educational excellence that will allow our entire BHUSD community to thrive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Like to make a motion to approve the agenda?
I will make a motion to approve the agenda.
All second. Motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Dr. Breggy, report of closed session.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Stern. I've got three items to report on this evening in closed session. The Board has voted four to zero in approval of OAH case 2023-100729. In the second, the Board has approved OAH case 2024-010489. And finally, the Board has approved four to zero in favor of AB 922, the Los Angeles County Plan for the Administration's Panel Recommendation for the Expulsion of Student Indisciplinary Case Number 2324-07. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome our Principal, Mr. Drew Stewart, up here, please.
Thank you very much, President Stern. Board of Education, it is my great pleasure tonight to introduce to you both an amazing educator at our school, as well as some of our very finest students who you've already heard from, several of them tonight. And so, what has started way back when is sort of a general elective, and then the Board of Education created as a graduation requirement for our students, a financial literacy course, which we think was very wise, has really and truly grown into significantly more than that, into a fully fleshed out pathway, under the guidance and the expertise of Mr. Tassama Gaddadu, who I'm very happy to announce. And he is also going to then introduce his students as well, and kind of talk about both his classes that he teaches at our school in the business pathway, as well as our DECA club and a lot of the other student organizations that he works very closely hand in hand with our students. And so, I would love to introduce Mr. Gaddadu.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me and my students here today. I'm gonna try to be brief so they get a chance to shine in the spotlight. My name is Mr. Gaddadu. I am also known as Mr. G on campus. I used to be known as Coach G. It's my third year at Beverly Hills High School. I am a CTE credential, as well as physical education credential teacher. I teach in the business pathway, as Drew mentioned. So, I teach personal finance, advanced business, introduction to business before that, business management capstone as well. And I have a sports conditioning course at the end of the day. I'm also a gate program instructor for BV students, Moneymakers Course. And I advise eight different student organizations. I'm just kind of bragging a little bit about myself, but sorry about that. I have several courses that I teach here. You'll notice there's a bit of a gaps. I'm hoping at some point we'll get DECA as a class in the future, hoping to have that happen. These are the course materials that I use in my classroom, just to highlight a few. So, we do Stock Simulator through Investopedia, as well as Business U, which students probably are tired of at this point in the year. Knowledge Matters is another platform. So, we utilize a lot of online learning, as well as connecting to real-world situations, and I'll share a bit through the presentation here. So, this is what Investopedia's Stock Simulator looks like. You'll see my account is number 10, so I'm losing my own game. But I'm making my way, trying to catch up. But it really introduces students to the fundamentals of investing. And they'll learn how to trade, whether it's options, stocks, exchange traded funds. We have a ranking system, so students can compete against one another, which is fun. I do that with all my classes. This is Business U, just kind of looks very similar to Google Classroom, so that's kind of from my perspective. It's very standards-based in terms of the learning, almost too standards-based for my taste at times. And it really, you know, highlights a lot of what we do from a financial perspective and a business perspective. And then this is kind of what an assessment would look like. For example, if there was a question, that's what the students would see on the top, and the bottom would be my side, so the teacher, the answer key, if you will, that I try to hide from them. And then Knowledge Matters is the other platform that we utilize, which involves simulations, as well as some reading and assessments. And so, when I log in, this is essentially what it looks like, but to bore you, not to bore you too much with the details. When we get to the reading portion, the fun part really begins with the simulations. Now, some of the students will differ with me, because we've done it about 10 weeks straight, so they're probably a bit tired of it, but that's the real-world application. In my classroom, what I try to do is make sure that students walk away with some sort of skills that they can apply to real life. That's important to me. So, being able to write a resume and write a cover letter, and actually write, you know, an application for employment, or know what your social security number is, and how to interview in front of an audience, and that can be very nerve-wracking. Public speaking, we do some presentations in class, and obviously, students have the opportunity to public speak today. And then from a financial side, some budgeting, saving, and of course, want to make sure they're getting introduced to investing. And then lastly, these are all the organizations I'm a part of. Again, I didn't mean to brag too much, but some of the students that are here today are representing all of these, for the most part, organizations. And I'll highlight DECA quickly. We have several students here that are a part of that organization, as well as the co-presidents who will speak shortly. I am the advisor. DECA really enables students to learn a bit more about business and get exposed through the conferences that we attend and hosting events on campus. So, it really gives them that real-world application of what it means to be in the business world. And so, we host a number of activities on campus, from Career Day to Club Day. And the image that you see there is from our District Career Development Conference. We had several students who were finalists and medalists at that conference, and very proud of that. And then Skills USA, which I'm new to as advisor, but it's been around for quite a while. Chef Lees and Professor Carey have been kind of behind that quite a bit. And I have students that are here that placed highly. They got medals, and so hopefully, they'll share a bit about that. It'd be great if they had their medals, but we'll see. And so, I'd like to pass it on down to my students and give them a chance to shine in front of you. So, first off are our co-presidents of DECA, Nora Nick Farjam and Yael Kalian.
Hi, I'm Yael Kalian.
And I'm Nora Nick Farjam, and we're current 11th grade students at Beverly. As Mr. G mentioned, we're the co-presidents of DECA, which is a business organization where we attend state and district conferences to compete in various business-related clusters, like marketing, business management, finance, hospitality, and entrepreneurship. And we actually placed third for Business Law and Ethics this year. Thank you. Before I pass it on to Yael, I'm the president of Rainby, which is a club at Beverly, and it focuses on neuroscience. I've been in contact with other high schools like Santa Monica and Pali to work together, and that's just like a brief overview. So, I'll pass it to Yael.
So, for DECA, we usually, we help everyone and all our members get ready for competition. We help them learn how to do all the role plays in competition. And then, I also did Skills USA for business. As in the regional competition, I got fifth place in job interview, and we're both members of Career Academy.
Now, we're gonna pass it to Remy.
Hello, everyone. I am Remy Javidzad, a current 11th grader at Beverly High. And I am also the current junior president of the junior class cabinet, and I'm excited to be the future student board member, to be working with all you. Thank you. I also have former positions in ASB, and I am a part of DECA as the VP of Networking, and I'm part of Skills USA, Career Academy, and many other extracurricular activities at our school and programs. And I also do different sports like water polo and swim, which I'm the co-captain of. And I love the school, and I love being a part of it, and the many leadership roles I have, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to be here today.
Hello, everyone. I'm Oliver Shamtov. I'm a junior, and I'm involved in DECA, Skills USA. And I've had former positions in DECA, as well as Interact Club, City Greens Club, and Robotics Business. I'm also the co-captain with Remy of the swim and water polo team, as well as the captain of the basketball, in the basketball program. And one story that I'll share that I've actually like gained from being a part of DECA and Skills USA is that in building my resume with Mr. G in his class, and then further improving it for our Skills USA competition, I was actually able to use it in helping get an internship with a real estate agent in our community. So, it was very helpful, and I was actually like able to use it. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. My name is Matthew Hanasab, and I'm an 11th grader at Beverly Hills High School.
I'm Rubens Romana Dowd. I'm also an 11th grader.
We are also a part of Skills USA, DECA, Career Academy. I'm gonna go over more what Skills USA is. It's actually very similar to DECA, how it's like, we do like role-playing, and there's various different like categories, such as like K-bev, business, fashion, so many things. This year, actually, me and Rubens, we both, we went to, we went to regionals, and we both placed top five. And then in nationals, we placed, or no, no, sorry, in regionals, we actually placed top, we placed second and third. But in, what is it called? In districts, we placed top five. So, yeah, it was. And we're also a part of Career Academy. Rubens, would you like to elaborate?
So, Career Academy is an organization that specializes in hospitality. Basically, once a month, we go and we tour in different groups, different hotels around Beverly Hills. So, this year, we had five different rotations with five different hotels. Each different rotation, we learn different specialties, or like how their business works. So, one time, we would learn like the food and beverage. We would learn the marketing, the sales, the front desk, and etc. I'm also a part of the French Club. I'm the treasurer, and I manage the accounts for French Club.
So, also, as mentioned earlier, through Mr. G's class, we learn a lot about like stock market and like investing in general. We have, we have a club at our school, a stock market club, which I'll be the future president of next year. And it's just great that we have these opportunities at our school, and we are just so grateful. So, thank you so much.
Awkward silence. I'll jump in. Oh, for them? Are we commenting on them? Can we, can we? May we? Thank you. Thank you so much for bringing this. I don't, I don't think we've had DECA come in front of us for a very long time, so I really appreciate this. I like, selfishly, I like seeing the financial literacy thing really taking off the way it does. Just a couple of quick comments. Mr. G, if I may call you Mr. G? Okay. So, do the students at all get to take any real, real funds, like something maybe they have at home, and also get involved with Investopedia, or E-Trade or something? Do they ever work like in the real world while, or parallel to doing Investopedia?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm actually surprised how much they already know. So, I'm kind of like, some of you don't really need me. You're already more advanced than me in some stages. So, yes, a lot of it is really, I think, supported by their families. They might already have an account set up, whether it's E-Trade, Robinhood, Schwab, and they're already investing. I mean, a lot of students are already completely knowledgeable, to the point where they could probably just co-teach it with me, when it gets to that point. But then there are some that have none at all, and so that's who I try to focus on and bring along and show them the fundamentals. And say, "Don't start trading options just yet," and I'll learn a little bit about, you know, single stocks and maybe exchange traded, exchange traded funds. So, yeah, absolutely.
And what do you guys do with all the other classes, like the freshmen, sophomore, and seniors, because you're all juniors? Are they like tied up in a closet somewhere? There's just, has anybody noticed they're all 11th graders here?
Yeah, that's why my classroom door is locked.
There you go.
No, we do, we do have some freshmen that are involved in Career Academy, I'm sorry, not Career Academy, in DECA, but they couldn't be here. Uh, but they couldn't be here today unfortunately. Uh, but that is a focus for next year to try to bring along. We, we just did interviews for DECA uh for next year. And we had some freshmen that are gonna be sophomores next year. And one of the things that uh I believe it was Crystal or Chantel Clinton that pointed out, they wanted to try to include more of the younger uh students and to get them more involved. But they are uh members of the organization as well, so they're just unfortunately not representing us today.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Remy, welcome. I look forward to joining, having you up here and we'll have a blast for a few months. Thank you.
Mr. G, nice to meet you.
Likewise.
Thank you for being here with your crew. Uh, I met some of you guys a couple of weeks ago at the CTA breakfast and that was really amazing. I gotta say that when the students are here with us is my favorite part of the meeting. So thank you for taking the time to join us and you guys are are simply amazing. Uh, please don't stop.
Well, it's nice to meet you also, Mr. G. I have never had the actual privilege that this is nice. Uh, I just gotta tell you guys, I am so impressed, unbelievable, and I'm so proud of you. And I have to tell you, you will always get out of something what you put into it. And it looks like you are really getting something out of your years at the high school. And I hope that you will always remember this because I don't know how you could not remember what you've done here today. And I'm, I'd just like to say that I see no grass growing under your feet in the future. You're all going to be stars, I understand, or I think. And I'm looking forward to you, Remy, joining me on the school board. And um, I just wanna make one quick question about one of them I saw. Um, Shemtob, uh, what's your, for your first thing, again? Okay, Oliver, you took an interest in ulcer, ulceritis, uh, a col- colon, something? Oh, that was you, yeah. Uh, you wanna be a doctor in that field or?
I started, I, I'm the founder of the club that I started this year and it's because of an autoimmune disease I have. So I want to create awareness about it and raise money for the institution, in, in institutions to help like find peers for the autoimmune disease.
Wow, okay, thank you. Wow, okay. Well, thank you for joining us tonight. I really enjoyed your presentation. Good luck.
First of all, Mr. G, you're selling yourself short, saying that they could probably teach the class because obviously you have a clear vision and a talent and the know-how, how to get the most out of the children, out of the students um regarding the subject. I always knew buy low, sell high, but obviously there's a lot more to it. And I, I'm really grateful that our students are are being exposed to that. And also, I, I'm really glad that we have um DECA and Acadaca and and that it enables students not only to acquire knowledge but to apply it. And also, it makes learning fun. And you know, competition is a great way to excite and motivate kids. Um, and there's nothing wrong with it. And it sounds like everyone did uh really well and made us really proud as a district, so thank you all.
Uh, also, Mr. G, thank you very much for your presentation. I really like how we were able to see how involved you all are because that sometimes we, we miss that with our spotlight and it really does get to show uh the community and the many staff members that are here today, just, just how you stretch yourself so thin to try to do as much as you can here uh as well as all the academic things on top of it. So uh, thank you for that. It was a great presentation.
Thank you very much.
Good evening. For our next item, we're gonna do it a little differently. Uh, first of all, as many of you may be aware, it is Teacher and Staff Appreciation Week. And we are very proud. Obviously, we could not do it without you guys and, and we're really thankful. Um, we do have a resolution, Resolution Number 2023, 2024 dash 16 uh presented today um for Teacher Appreciation Week. And if it's okay, um colleagues, I would like to read the resolution and then we can um move and approve it. So, may I call uh Ms. Elena Castan on, please? Thank you, Elena. We would like to present this to you as well as to the teachers and educators. So I'll read this. Um, whereas the teacher educators of the Beverly Hills Unified School District work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and the utmost professionalism. And whereas our teachers shape and influence young lives for a lifetime through their guidance and instruction as well as by example. And whereas the future success of our children depends on the dedicated and conscientious instruction provided by teachers and other educators. And whereas the teaching profession collectively remains one of our noblest and most vital professions. And whereas the love of learning and the desire for excellence that our teachers impart to their students is the key to a bright and successful future. And whereas our essential certificated staff demonstrate commitment, perseverance and flexibility on a daily basis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education wishes to honor and thank teachers for their diligent and dedicated efforts to ensure all children have a quality education. Be it further resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education encourages all communities to join together to honor teachers by proclaiming Teacher Appreciation Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District this year to be from May 6th through May 10th, 2024 in honor of the district's exceptional teaching staff whose excellence, talent and expertise have enabled this district to maintain a program of quality education. Elena, I'm gonna have you hold this and I think you have a little photo up here. Can I get a motion for the approval of Resolution Number 2023, 2024 dash 16?
I will so move.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, uh, motion made by uh Ms. Market, Ms. Marcus, seconded by Mr. Marco, Margot. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And so the resolution passes. Congratulations and we thank you dearly. Okay, next I have a number of individuals to call up. Um, may I please get Jesse Seles? Um, Carol Cornia, um, sorry, Cornier? Um, Adelfa Kobe? Are they here? Okay.
Sixty-six percent.
Thank you so much. And we honor you and in board member language, we do a resolution. Um, and we very much are grateful for you. So whereas the classified staff at the Beverly Hills Unified School District contributes significantly to the outstanding educational programs available in our district and are the heartbeat of our schools. And whereas the classified school employees are crucial partners with teachers, parents and administrators in the Beverly Hills Unified School District. And whereas the classified staff is involved in nearly every aspect of education, including maintaining school buildings and grounds, providing secretarial and clerical assistance, preparing and serving meals, assisting in the classroom and many other specialized services. And whereas these dedicated individuals deserve recognition and thanks for the outstanding work they are doing. And whereas our essential classified staff demonstrate commitment, perseverance and flexibility on a daily basis. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Beverly Hills Unified School District Board of Education does hereby proclaim Classified School Employee Week in the Beverly Hills Unified School District from May 19th through May 25th, 2024 and does hereby pay tribute to the diligence, loyalty, skill and expertise of all classified employees. Okay, and we've got a round of applause.
I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023, 24, 17, Classified School Employee Appreciation Week.
I will second the motion.
Okay. Uh, motion made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The mo- the resolution passes. Thank you. Now we come to our public comment period. We have a number of individuals. I would like to first call up Aaron Reitman. And Aaron, I understand that time has been seated to you, so I believe you have six minutes.
Six minutes? All right, we need Mr. Waters here every uh board meeting. Great representation. All right, good evening, Board of Education, Dr. Bregge, his cabinet and the millions of viewers watching on K-bev on YouTube. My name is Dr. Reitman. I'm a member of the Principal Advisory Committee at Hawthorne. I'm a board certified pediatrician, board certified neonatologist, and associate professor at a local medical school with a background in speech, language pathology, learning disabilities and audiology. I re- I rely on evidence-based medicine, my everyday practice, to help me make informed decisions for my patients. Today, I aim to provide evidence-based medicine to the school district in hopes the school district will take the necessary steps to make sure our students succeed. The American Academy of Pediatric recommends no screen time for children under two. One hour per day for children two to twelve years of age. Two hours per day for teens and adults. Maximum. So all the people who are watching this board meeting on YouTube, you've reached your limit for today. Health, development and behavior of children are always a hot topic of pediatrics. During childhood, individual psychology and behavior develops rapidly and gradually stabilizes. But developmental delay and behavioral problems are easily induced under the impact of various external risk factors. Therefore, early detection of risk and protective components associated with developmental behavioral problems is essential and urgent for the intervention and prevention. Tonight, I will summarize, quote, and use direct sentences during the public comment from a peer-reviewed paper by Dr. Q and associates titled "Association Between Screen Time and Developmental and Behavioral Problems Among Children in the United States." This clinical research study was published in the Journal of Psychiatric, Psychiatric Research in May of 2023. This study was supported by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, Health Resources and Service Administration, Maternal Child Health Bureau and the National Survey of Children's Health. Dr. Q's study utilized a large sample size, 101,350 children between the ages of zero and seventeen years to comprehensively examine the association between screen time and seven types of developmental and behavioral problems across all childhood. According to the Guidelines on Screen Time by the World Health Organization, excessive screen time of preschoolers was defined greater than one hour per day of screen time. And excessive screen time of children adolescents was defined greater than two hours per day of screen time, and this is what Dr. Q used for her study. For the prevalence of excessive screen time, seventy percent of preschoolers and eighty percent of children adolescents have been identified with excessive screen time in the study. For the outcome of developmental behavioral problems with these children who had excessive screen time, eight percent with behavioral and conduct problems were diagnosed. Seven percent had developmental delay. One percent had intellectual disability. Eight percent diagnosed with speech disorder. Seven percent had learning disabilities. Three percent had autism spectrum disorder and ten percent had ADHD diagnosed in this population. There was a significant difference in the prevalence of development and behavioral problems across the various categories of screen time. Additionally, the trend in the prevalence of these problems was found to increase with longer screen time. After adjusting potential confounding factors compared with less than one hour per day, children with two, three, four or more hours of screen time per day significantly showed one point three to two point one times odds of developmental delay. One point five to two times of speech disorder. Two to three point five times odds of autism. Preschoolers with greater than four hours of screen time per day significantly had one point seven times odds of behavioral and conduct problem. Two times of learning disability and one point nine times odds of ADHD. The association between excessive screen time and developmental and behavioral problems was stronger amongst preschoolers than among children and adolescents. Boys with excessive screen time showed higher odds of most types of developmental and behavioral problems. It can be concluded that children with excessive screen time are at higher odds of developmental behavioral problems, especially for preschoolers and boys, early interventions and digital media. Use essential, early intervention, digital media use is essential, that we must protect, take protective me- uh measures. So these are my recommendations. One, implement screen time guidelines. Set clear limits on how much time students spend on screens each day and ensure that these guidelines are followed closely. Two, promote offline activities. Read a book. Three, use screen time wisely. When screen time is necessary in the classroom, ensure that it is used for specific educational purposes rather than simply for enter- entertainment. Four, provide alternatives. Offer alternative activities that do not involve screens, like again, such, such as reading a, a book. Educate students. Teach students about the importance of balancing screen time with other activities for their overall well-being, including physical health, social skills and mental health. Involve parents. Engage parents in discussions about screen time limits and provide resources and support for them to enforce similar guidelines at home. Model behavior. Parents, teachers, school staff, even myself should serve as role models by demonstrating healthy screen time habits themselves. By implementing these strategies, schools can help reduce excess screen time and promote a more balanced approach to technology use among students. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to call Nikki Shamsi. You also had time seated to you, so you have six minutes.
Good evening. What do Steve Jobs, Bill Gates, the chief technology officer of eBay and executives from Google and Apple all have in common? They all raise their children technology-free. Steve Jobs, the inventor of the iPad, prohibited his own chi- uh his own kids from using the technology. Bill Gates didn't let his kids use cell phones until they were fourteen. The developers and employees of Google, Apple and Snapchat are all sending their kids to computer-free Waldorf schools. Is there something they know that the rest of us aren't privy to? We are all too familiar with the effects of too much screen time on children's brains and behavior. Inattention and shorter attention spans, distraction issues, impulsiveness, aggressiveness. They're more anxious. There is impacts on social emotional development. They display poor social skills in real-world interactions. Addictive and compulsive behavior, and that's just to name a few. Many studies have shown that the younger the brains, the greater the negative effects of screens and talk and technology is observed and measured. Children's brains are now hardwired for the instant gratification of Snapchat, TikTok and YouTube Shorts. Teachers have to fight to gain the students' active attention. I fear that we are losing the opportunity to foster a lifelong love of learning and how to concentrate deeply and master human interaction, critical thinking, creativity and problem-solving skills. Students can type quickly but struggle to write legibly. They can find information about any topic on the internet but can't discuss the topic using recall, creativity or critical thinking. They can make a beautiful PowerPoint or keynote in twenty minutes but may exhibit difficulty writing a three-page paper or hand-make a poster board. Their textbooks are all online, but it's tangible pages under your fingers that literally connect you to the material you're reading and learning. Some kids do not know how to move through their day without a device in their hand. They never even get the chance to disconnect from their tech and reconnect with one another through eye contact and conversation. I'm distressed at the level of technology we've socialized them to believe is normal. We've let tech companies and their products set the terms of the argument about what education should be. Companies never had to prove that devices or software, broadly speaking, helped students learn before those devices had warmed their way into America's public schools. And now the onus is on parents and some educators to argue the detriment of tech in schools. Google makes thirty dollars per device by selling management services for the millions of Chromebooks that ship to schools. But by habituating students to its offerings at a young age, Google obtains something much more valuable, potential lifelong customers. And considering that various tech companies are developing artificial intelligence that were that we're meant to understand, will upend work as we know it. Whatever tech skills we're currently teaching will probably be obsolete by the time students enter the workforce anyway. By then, it'll be too late to claw back the brain space of our nation's children that we've already seeded. And for what? So today's grade schoolers can be really, really good at making PowerPoint presentations like the ones they might one day make as white-collar adults. The truth is, there has been very little oversight and no real proof that the software and services from tech companies improve educational outcomes. We should all concern ourselves with young adults' abilities to survive in a real world that's much more than computers and the importance, much more than computers, and the importance of critical thinking outside of getting a job. Our kids are growing up to be passive and unimaginative learners. In light of the ever advancement of artificial intelligence, what's going to differentiate the humans from the Internet is the ability to be creative and visionary, to think and solve problems, and work collaboratively with other people and with social intelligence. If we don't hit pause now and try to roll back some of the excesses, we'll be doing our children and society a profound disservice. Thank you.
Thank you. I would now like to call up Dr. Jane Taviev. And you as well have six minutes.
Okay, wow, those were some tough acts to follow from my friends. That was amazing, Nikki. I was asked to bring some literature to support, I mean, everything that my friends here have said ahead of me. I think that there is so much literature out there about what this screen time is doing to our children's brain development, and it's, there's not even time to go through all of it. I mean, even what I've just been doing in the last few days, preparing for this, just combing through article after article. This pile is just what I found on how handwriting influences brain development differently than typing and what it does to actual language development, really, reading fluency. So love of reading comes from handwriting and the parts of the brain that are activated by that process, the phonemic awareness of both the beginning and the end of the word, which is a totally different experience than reading it, reading a word or typing a word onto a computer. So it's actually, we're actually changing the architecture of the brain when we substitute handwriting with typing essays anywhere in elementary school. And this is just a quick sample that I gathered into hours today. There's more out there. So I think that, how do we present this to our school district? You know, we are Beverly Hills School District. How do we become the thought leaders in combining what is available in the literature with what we can do live in the classroom? And what do we do? I think, I'm trying to understand where the educational community is coming from and why this hasn't taken off everywhere, given how much literature is so available. And I think it's because, in part, there is some educational literature that is confusing and that gives some data that can be confusing when you're trying to sort through this. So I did find, for example, that in a child, in children who are very behind in math, who are in a, in this one article, it was a lower socioeconomic status group that had specific math problems, and they were given a specific math computer program to help them to catch up in math. And that math program was able to help them to bridge the gap. But even in this article supporting the math program, it admitted that it was using less cognitive load. So, meaning that this was a subgroup of students who needed it and benefited from it, but it didn't give them true math creativity. It just helped them to succeed better in that specific math program at the early elementary school level. So I am sure that there are things that technology can do to help certain populations of students and to help us in specific circumstances. But when we're looking at our school, our school group as a whole, we have to look at the sleep that they're receiving. And I sent the board, and I have copies of articles that, and it's in the lay literature. How, what's, what's screen time is doing to sleep and to physiology, to cortisol levels the next day? Morning cortisol levels the next day after you've spent a lot of time on a screen? And so what's a lot of time on a screen? We can't say it's at home, it's the parents, it's the phone. I mean, we can say that, but we have to look first at what we have control over. So in this room, we have control over what we're doing in the school. And besides that, even looking beyond at the parent issue, we have control in this room to influence the culture of our school. We know that what happens in the school really influences a new generation of thinkers. We know this by trying to culturally influence our own students through things that we're introducing. I come from a communist country, I'm from the Soviet Union. They knew that by influencing the next generation of rising communists. I have, my husband is from Iran. There, in Iran, they told students to stamp on the, stamp on the American and Israeli flags and say, "Death to America, death to Israel." That's how they were able to influence a generation of children. Whatever we teach our children, whatever culture we imbue them with, they will carry with them. So we have these examples. So we can start in the school. Instead of saying, "You should read these books on Kindle," we can say, "You should read these books not on Kindle." Okay? So instead of finding, looking for ways to use more, we should look for ways to pull back. We should understand that the handwriting is more important than the typing, because the typing can come later. We should understand that, that the less time on the screen means better sleep that night. Less, the homework shouldn't be on the screen because it's going to impact the sleep that night. So there is a lot that's in our control. Once we create a culture like that, the kids will not want the phones as much. I mean, we'll be more successful in implementing programs like wait until eighth, things like that, where the children have no smartphone until eighth grade. And we'll be able to push that program. Yes, we are having a hard time in our school population pushing that program. I think in the younger grades, it's going to catch on. Our older students, we kind of missed the boat on it, but we, we have hope to change that. So is there literature? There's plenty of literature. There's plenty of literature about that. And the question becomes, what can we do about it? One last thing in my last 14 seconds is, you know, the Department of Homeland Security gave us a really excellent lecture a few weeks ago after the AI incident. And they told us that the kids will be able to bypass any, any blocks that you put on their, on the phone that you give them at home, or even on your school firewall. And that's true right now. The kids, starting in elementary school, middle school, and high school, I'm sure, are downloading video games, watching movies, YouTube Shorts, video games, things that have been blocked by your firewall. They're all, not they're all accessing it, but plenty of them are accessing it. So the firewall is not effective. So what can we do?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Shiba Bagary. Shiba, you have three minutes. I'm sorry, someone did not, I don't have, that someone's seated time.
Okay, so discrimination, that's okay. No, I'm just kidding. I'm here because of, there's some concerns about safety here. I live here on Robbins, and there are people zooming down the street during school hours, and I think they are the kids. So I really think that we need speed bumps around the school because, and we need the teachers to talk to the kids and say, "You know, you guys, one person that you hit is going to ruin your life." Like, we need the teachers to talk about how important it is that once you get a car, that you need to be safe, you know? And you got to watch out for pedestrians. The father of my child's girlfriend's dog almost got ran over about three weeks ago. This is not cool. Secondly, you know, we have these security guards, but I think for safety, we need police officers. I mean, we're in a predicament here. We had 1,088 arrests in two years and only two convictions because of George Gascon, which we need to remove, I hope that. I'm not a big fan of Hockman, but he's better than George Gascon. So I hope you all vote for him, and I hope you vote for Trump, because we need secure borders as well. So we, you know, it, it, these guys cannot, you know, they can't do what a police officer does. I like them a lot. I know them by name. They're great guys. But, you know, if there's somebody that did what they did at the elementary school over here, El Rodeo, the homeless guy that, remember, he locked himself in the bathroom? And a great thing about our police officers, they were there pretty quickly. But I still think that we need police officers on the school campus, you know, just in case, because I want to make sure that our kids are safe, number one. Okay? That's it.
I didn't need six minutes. Adria Karen. Adria, you have three minutes.
Hi. Just wanted to tell you that 60 years ago, I graduated from this high school. We are going to have our 60-year reunion this year. So I love Beverly. I love what you're doing. I think this is an amazing district and school, and we are so lucky to have a small community where we have some control over our school district and what we can teach. I agree with almost every single person who's spoken so far. And your class on business, wow, I wish I had had that. I wish my kids had had that. They all, three kids went to Beverly Vista, and I can say that my ex-husband just told me that they're all in the top 1% of their profession. So yay, okay. What I have to say is very short, and it's not a criticism. I, as a professional, I'm an artist, but I also manage property apartments. And I had a tour of El Rodeo, the new school. And I, I'm going to try to say this in the most politically correct way I could possibly do it, so I'm going to read it. Okay. Have you all walked through El Rodeo, the new construction? Any of you? You've all walked through, okay. I'm just here to recommend you all personally assess the interior air quality of the new construction areas as I sense that you could have occupancy issues in the future, which I believe would be in your best interest to address now. Okay? I found out there are windows that open, so, you know, we all are pretty aware. I was struck, I have to say, by the air. I don't want to sit here and be critical and cause all kinds of problems, but I think there could be a problem if you guys don't really think about it and talk about it. The interior air quality in some of the new areas. I did notice when you went to the flooring of the old school, which was polished and beautiful near the auditorium, no problem with the air quality. So I'm going to guess, from having rehabed apartments for the last 40 years, there might be an issue in the flooring, because flooring's made of petroleum product, plastic. And I'm not sure what can be done about that. I mean, if it was just an apartment, I'd probably take that flooring out and put in tile or something else. But I think you really have to seriously think about how that air quality is going to affect classrooms in this coming-up year, and maybe deal with it now. Okay, and that's it, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you. Now we move on to the consent calendar. I'd like to get...
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus items 10B, 1, 10E, and 10F.
All second?
Yes.
All second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve item 10B, 1, the certificated personnel report.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Discussion, please.
Okay, discussion.
Shall I start?
Please.
It's not a very momentous item listed on the agenda. It's kind of just something in passing, and yet for our district and for this particular gentleman, it is very, very momentous, I would say. As simple as moving from a Class 8 to a Class 9, different steps. But that's not sexy, is it? No, it's not. But bringing in Mr. Rich Waters as the new principal of Beverly Vista is. Now, sure, there are other items on this certificated report tonight, but the reason this was pulled was to shine some spotlight on this particular item. So not to put down the other items. They're all worthy. They're all worthy of our vote. But we are thrilled about the move at Beverly Vista, Dr. Bregge, and this board, which they'll all speak for themselves, but I will say that I personally have known Rich for probably too long, right? We go way back. Rich, you were 85, right? Right. Rich was 85, I was 86, so that should tell you a little bit of something.
He looks good for 85.
So, no, no. Graduate. You got to land the right joke, President Stern.
I tried, I tried.
Somewhere deep down in all of our drawers, Rich and I have some Beverly Hills Recreation Parks Department shirts there from our time working for the city. And look, we both wind up in the school district. Look at us, lucky us. This has been something that I have had my fingers crossed behind my back for a very long time. And I think fortunately, just a few months shy of me departing, this actually came to fruition. So I am thrilled, I'm personally thrilled. I thank Beverly Vista, which is also my alma mater, is in wonderful, wonderful hands moving forward. So congratulations, Mr. Waters.
Ms. Manishari, go ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Waters, congratulations to us for having you lead our middle school. I am already so grateful to you for everything that you've done for the last several decades for this school district. And I know that what you're going to do is going to be just a continuation of the same, and I have no doubt that it's going to be amazing. And I am just so grateful to you for the leadership and the sense of respect and self-respect you bring to our kids, and that vibe of you know better, you're accountable, and let's keep your side of the street clean, and this is how you do it. And so I'm really grateful to you for all the education and the leadership that you're going to bring to our kids. And we're here for you also, and we know that your team is here for you as well. And it's really amazing to have all of you here with us, standing by Mr. Waters, in front of him, on his side, behind him. And so how lucky are we to have all of you on the same page as us in this regard? So congratulations and welcome aboard.
Nobody knows Rich Waters better than Mrs. Marcus. He will tell you that, and I will tell you that. I go back further than you, Mr. Marcus.
We can arm wrestle, but I don't want to lose in front of everybody.
You won't win. Mr. Waters and I met in his eighth-grade class at El Rodeo in science. I have known Rich, Mr. Waters, Rich because he was rich to me for all those years, from the time I started, when I first came to El Rodeo. We also had the opportunity to work together at Hawthorne as the principal, and how well I could see what he could do with the kids. He was the assistant principal and the principal there. I had occasion to go back to El Rodeo as a math teacher, and Rich was a math teacher there. I could spin many, many stories about my relationship. I can spin the story of his picking a disease in the eighth grade. He will remember that fondly. And I will tell you, I feel like I've had a bit of a seed planted in making him where he is today. He has been, to me, the most outstanding student, leader, teacher, administrator that I've ever worked with. And I'm so proud that he's finally going to be a principal at our middle school. Rich, I welcome you aboard. I love you. Thank you.
Mr. Waters is so humble. He's like hiding over there. But it's all true. And I cannot claim to have known you to the depth and years that many have, but I have only heard extraordinary things about you. And it is no easy task to be at a middle school. All middle schools are tough. And some of the most difficult interpersonal things with, among staff, or parents, or kids, are all three in one big messy triangle. You have been instrumental in many ways, and I know that's true. And we are... And we are just so pleased, and we will support you. And it is a hard job, but we know you can do it, so thank you very much. Okay, so let's vote.
Yeah, I could do it before or after.
Go ahead.
So having the ability to be able to appoint someone is a very big responsibility. You know, there's a very big difference between going through and interviewing and appointing. And so, and I don't take that lightly. But after learning about Dr. Skon's promotion, we sat down in his cabinet, and we started to look at, like, what are the qualities that we're looking for? These are just a few of them that our cabinet came up with that you can just see that just formed, you know, that there was nobody else that was going to be able to interview for this position that would be a stronger candidate than Mr. Waters. One of the most trusted, respected administrators in the district, an alumni, knows the community. Approachable, coachable, works closely with our parent organization, experience with district operations, curriculum, our new strategic plan, tackles complex student issues with kindness, respect, and empathy. His approach to his position is innovative, consistently collaborative, very tall, not timid in handling the most difficult situations and conversations, and just an exemplary role model for our students. So congratulations. We are very, very excited about this appointment. And I want to take this opportunity also just to thank the BVMS staff, because I love all of our schools. I love all of our schools, and I feel so fortunate to be the superintendent here. But there is this feeling walking on your campus and walking through your halls that is a little bit different. And the way that you have pulled together always through some of the most difficult situations in the last eight years that I've been here, and how you've handled those professionally and personally. I cannot thank you enough for that, and I cannot thank you enough for being here. There's no better or warmer welcome than to have this many staff here as you are being introduced to your new principal, so thank you.
Okay, I'd like to call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Bring us to reports, our beloved student board member.
No, 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 we have two other pulled items.
Ah, sorry.
Sorry. I'll make a motion for the approval of ed tech tools for 24-25 school year. Oh, should we just wait till the room clears out? Was it something we said?
Thank you. Good night. Sleep well, sleep well.
Bye, Bulldogs.
Is this something we said they're all leaving?
I guess so.
Okay, I will restate the motion to approve ed technology tools for 24-25 school year.
All second?
Okay.
Oh, yep, go ahead.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to walk through this all together, if you have a few minutes, because I really want to be cognizant of what we are passing here. So as far as I can tell, and this goes, and Dr. Seaman, would you like to join us? You're up. First, let me congratulate you on your doctor status.
Thank you so much.
I don't know how you found the time to make that happen, but you and I need to be up between 12:00 AM and 6:00 AM to get it all done.
100%, 4:00 AM on Saturdays.
I'll see you at the library, yes. You make us proud. Thank you for doing that. I got to say, Dr. Seaman, the one thing that I've noticed when I've gotten to know you the last couple of years is the plethora of opportunities that you provide our students. Your imagination and your desire to connect with the kids and to give each one of them something to hold on to is something that I've seen again and again. I see it when I'm at the elementary schools, at the middle school, and at the high school. And I think that the DECA students and Mr. G students being here today really bring that point home. There's something for everybody, and it's because of you and your team, so thank you. When I look at this list, I also see that this is a suite of technology that offers something for everybody. And so I, knowing you now, I know where it's coming from. Another thing that I admire about you is that sometimes you really hold the line on certain things. Like, for example, the SATs were done away with, but you asked the board to dig in and pay for SATs and make it an SAT day. Handwriting was done away with at the state level, and BHUSD did not stop handwriting in the third grade. The list can, you know, my list can go on. I think that our parents were here tonight, and I agree with them to an extent as well. And I don't think they were asking us to throw the baby out with the bathwater in their words, but I think they were sharing something that we all already agree with. I don't even have to ask my colleagues and Dr. Bregge and you, what are your thoughts? I know through our cell phone policy and through other actions that we've taken that we know that limitations are a good thing. And we're a small enough school district that we can, you know, read the literature, take the advice, understand what the Department of Education is requiring of us, asking of us, and then trying to work backwards from that. I look on this list, and I see, even though it's very tiny, and I'm having a hard time these days, I see a lot of the items that are non-starters for me in the sense that they have to happen, you know? When CASP is being, you know, tested on devices, and that's how it's being implemented, and that's the only way that we can do it to comply, fine, let's have a conversation about what is necessary, and then let's have a conversation about what is helpful to support those necessary items, you know? Like, for example, we as a board are very interested to do more testing to be able to figure out how do we help our students, you know? As an example, Mrs. Kaber meets with the grade-level teachers on a monthly basis, and she uses some of the programming to support how she's honing in. And so we don't want to handcuff our administration and our teachers from being able to make the progress to our goals. But then I would be interested to know, in your opinion, what is not necessary and what is not necessarily directly supporting all of those endeavors. Another interest I have is to learn a little bit more about the TK through second grade. I could be wrong, so please correct me at any time. But my understanding is that the testing, the CASP, and all of that really starts in the third grade. So in my mind, as I'm trying to organize and sift through 22 different items, which are all, I read through them, we use them, you know? I try to differentiate, okay, let's talk about third grade and up, and then let's talk about TK, Kinder first and second. Even when Dr. Reitman spoke, he, for example, mentioned, we heard preschool, preschool, early development. Our TKers are preschool plus, you know what I mean? And so I really would be interested to know what's happening sixth and above, what's, I'm sorry, third and above, and in those realms, what's necessary, what's supportive, and what's extra? And let's talk about it. And then I would be more interested on, in knowing, is anything necessary in the TK through two grades, you know? And I try not to talk about my own kids when I'm here. I try to be a trustee of everybody's student and not make anything personal. But I will give you guys an example, because I don't think my colleagues spend time with as many little kids as I do, because I'm the mom of three kids aged 14 and younger. And between my side and Kami's side, I have on my side four nephews and a niece, and then on Kami's side, a nephew and a niece. So it's like seven, eight, nine, 10 little kids at all times, you know? My little one, who's a TKer with us, on Saturday morning, she asked me, "Hey, can you get me an iPad?" "No, but why?" "I really want to download this ABC mouse." "Why?" "Because I really want to do more math problems." And so that's a pretty good headache to have, you know, as a mom. So I said, "Okay, well, why don't we ask your teacher if she can recommend some notebooks, and we can do it that way?" And she's a pretty mellow girl, and so she said, "Okay, Mom," and then moved on. A half hour later, I was doing my workout, and she came to me with a notebook, and she decided to make her own notebook. And with that notebook came 48 hours of this project-based learning, where she was creating a notebook, cartooning, doodling, adding stickers to it. And the timing was really perfect, because I had read the agenda Friday night, late night, and it was on my mind, and then she just served this on a silver platter to me, you know? And so I understand that we have deliveries that we want to make insofar as our kids' education goes, but I do think that we can pull back a little bit and scale back a little bit. And also, unless it's necessary, we have to give the parents who don't want this for their kids a chance to safeguard, you know, the childhood, safeguard the way the brain is developed. I think it's hard for us to relate, because we didn't have these problems. But I'll tell you, the difference between my 14-year-old and my 12-year-old, it's significant. I see what two, three years of more technology earlier influenced did to them. And it's not a good thing, you know? And I really wonder, how are these kids going to be able to sit down and do the type of work that I do for an hour or two hours at a time if they're not really able to focus on doing the work? So that's it. I welcome everybody's thoughts and considerations. This is definitely not an attack on the amazing stuff that anybody wants to provide our teachers and our students, but I would love to carve a little bit and scale back a little bit, if possible.
So if I could jump in real fast, just on the list itself. So we walked in seven years ago, and I'm just going to do a little history lesson. If you were to look at, seven years ago, a board approval list of educational technology, it was one-offs. So the Board of Education at the time was probably approving one ed tech tool here, one specific for El Rodeo, because they had additional funds at PTA level, one over at Hawthorne, and it was hit or miss across the board, and there was no structure behind that. Working with our current administration, former directors of educational technology, like Dr. Bernadette Lucas, we were able to really start to create a structure, a vetting system of what we were actually bringing and granting access for our students to be able to utilize. And so we had to pull a lot of those things out by the roots. Whether or not, and I want to preference this, by nobody's fault, right? That other people felt more comfortable utilizing a system over here, or somebody liked a system over there. And so over time, we were able to streamline that into a singleton list. We bring this to the Board of Education for consideration on purpose as a singleton list, so the community, out of transparency, can actually see what it is that we're bringing to you that we've vetted through looking at other school districts that have utilized it. What is the data behind utilizing it, and what is the benefit? What is the cost-benefit ratio, right? And that's what we're really playing this game here. None of us are mad. We're just caught in this game between what does CASP require of our students? And if we don't allow them to type paragraphs in third grade, we can't expect a difference in test scores. So let me still continue to back up. And so we had the Wild West, literally, and we were able to be able to bring that in. And even if you were to look pre-COVID, so if you look at the board agendas in 2019 to what we are bringing to you today, where a lot of school districts are having a hard time coming back from COVID and pulling instructional technology out, we are actually bringing even less tools to you, not more. So in 2019, we still continued to have more tools on this list, because each year, you know, Mr. Margot's been on here, we are asked that same question of, how are we utilizing it? What's the data to support these decisions? What are your cross-references? What are your colleagues or counterparts, or who else are utilizing them? So that's where you get this less. So they're thoroughly vetted. There is purpose and rhyme and reason behind each of those recommendations for purchase from not only the Education Services Department, the teachers, the I-4 coaches, there were some of them, and the principals, assistant principals. So there's that piece of the puzzle. What I believe, our conversation during open, this isn't part of that necessarily, because like you stated, each of the items, and I can walk through each of them for you, does serve a different role. Like, no red ink is for our way to try to catch AI-generated essays. So it's on there, and it looks like a, it looks like it's, but it looks like another item that we're shoving into the kids' hands, and that's not the case, right? Apex is on there, but that is, again, for our independent learning center. And the students have to have access to a digital curriculum, because they're traveling the world, right? We just got notification of one of our former students. She was in the ILC program for six years, never stepped foot on this campus, and just graduated from Northeastern with honors over the weekend. You know, so she was able to be in that program, utilize that digital curriculum, go to Northeastern, and graduate with honors in four years' time. So there are all of the recommendations on here, and I can kind of start from the bottom, from the top and go down. I mentioned the Apex Edgenuity. That is our ILC curriculum that we utilize, that UC-approved, NCAA-approved. And what's interesting is, if you compare it to any other digital platform, it is the most rigorous. So if anything, I get more pushback from those students on the fact that it is hard, right? Again, Book Creator, that is at that elementary level. It really allows for our, it's not just our students. Our teachers are utilizing it. I'm going to use your example. President Dr. Stern, it's three of them. But you'd mentioned in your career that you utilize, I'm going to use AI as an example, to be able to build a reading lesson, grade-appropriate to differentiate for students.
Incredible, incredible.
But this is an example of that tool, that they can utilize that to differentiate within for an English learner student, where they're doing the same amount of work. That's what we have to think about. What, let me backtrack one more time.
Can I stop you on that one?
Yep.
Like, for example, for item two, Book Creator, in the description, it says, "Book Creator is a digital tool that enables students to create and read, et cetera, multi-dimensional digital books." So I'm hearing you, and I'm not trying to restrict the teachers, but I would be interested to know, just speaking specifically to this one, what read levels does this apply to? And would we want to, for example, do some kind of a, this applies to sixth and above? Or, you know, I mean, we could, for example, go down each one? Or another thing we could do is, as a board, we can say, "Hey, we would like you to consider implementing some parameters. Why don't you go back and come back to us?" I don't want to put you on the spot for each one. That's not my intention at all.
No, and I could do each one. I mean, but what I, but what I'm saying is we...
I don't want to do each one. I sort of trust that you have culled from...
But I do think, I, this isn't part of this approval process, but I do think it needs to be said as well, is you just had a full auditorium of Beverly Vista Middle School teachers. And we did have three speakers speak, and we do agree with definitely some of those points that were made. We, again, as you're coming out of a pandemic itself, some of the behaviors that are demonstrated aren't in isolation to the fact that we utilize a device in the classroom which differentiates for our students. And that's a piece that a lot of people in the community are not taking in consideration, is the fact that we have 251 EL kids sitting in a classroom, and now for the first time ever, that kid's not getting a different worksheet than the kid next to them, right? So when you want to talk about social-emotional learning and the impact it has on those students, we also have special education students fully integrated into the classroom. And guess what? They're no longer being pulled out into a side room. They're sitting, doing the exact same work, but the device is supporting them in being able to differentiate that work, so everybody feels the same. And what you don't know is there's 21 people in that classroom, and all 21 get to stay in that classroom. So those are the benefits that we can't dismiss. While still, I believe that we are the right ones to have discussions, and our teachers are already doing that. They were shaking their heads, too. That... That they are finding other ways to make sure that this isn't consuming any of their instructional practices. That they're able to go back and kind of uh, work their kids back into, you know, not a sit and get. We don't want them to just sit and lecture at them. But um, having those critical thinking, removing the di- devices a little bit more. But this isn't part of that discussion. And then working collaboratively, it's really us working at the state level. It's not what we're doing here. There's two things that we aren't talking about is there's ed code that says I can't dictate what you're doing instructional into the classroom. So I, I have limitations in that discussion to begin with, but, and we all do, truly. And then, um, what is it that CD is requiring us to do? So my recommendation for this list should be considered outside of the conversation that should be had down the road of like, what do we wanna do around? Uh, what are the expectations that we could work with our union on creating parameters to protect our students utilizing devices and other opportunities? Does that make sense? It's really two different conversations.
Makes sense to me and for me, it's not about um, dictating anything to the teachers, but I think that inherently when we're, when we are paying um, for the programs and proffering them, then they're gonna be used. And so from a board perspective, I think that's the impact that we can have is to make some of them less available particularly to the younger grades. So it's, so if it's, if it's not there, then you are inherently making a decision on what can and can't happen in the classroom. You know, and so I don't think that has to go back for a union discussion. I think that's a policy discussion about do we wanna pay for X? Because if we do, then it's gonna get used.
Can I um, say something about, okay? Um, so I wanna say that all of the amazing tools I've learned that have helped me personally and professionally and helped me to help children. So he recited the AI example, this chat GPT you can say, give me a fourth grade student who grew up in Switzerland and who had a learning disability and learned how to read and boom, it does it. Now, that isn't meant for someone to copy, but it was useful because that one particular child was like, wow, this, you know, I can, I can relate to this story. And yeah, just on the fly, that was generated. But there's probably a dozen or so tools that have been given to me for the purposes of, of bettering uh, my career as a school psychologist. Every single one of them was given to me by someone who's about ten years younger. I bring that up because if we wanna continue to attract, I'm not saying young people necessarily, but people who are on the forefront of education and teaching and our peer districts, if we wanna keep it attractive, we want some of the best technological tools available to them. And these are some of them. Now, when we talk about the dangers of screen time, there's no question. We talk about addiction. We talk about kids who don't use eye contact. Um, and, and specifically as Dr. Reitman uh, skillfully said, those in the younger subset whose brains are largely plastic. It's terrible when you see that they're on that for five hours a day doing some sort of game. But when we
Not with us for five hours.
Yeah, no, 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 no.
I'm like, we're not putting them on for five hours.
But when we talk about screen time, we have to divide a little bit between um, gratuitous um, lulling of the brain and some tools that genuinely help kids with time management, giving you increments so you can um, slice apart a project. Or, you know, my seventeen-year-old goes on because he has to like, um, put in the hours he can work at the, at the pool in West Hollywood. So when we talk about screen time, uh, we, it's, there's definitely some horrible effects going on. But we must separate between those tools that help educators and children and the activities and um, pastimes, especially with young kids, that are absolutely um, you know, affect them um, uh, in an adverse way. Um, another thing that is also an amazing tool, and I don't know if you call it AI, I don't know if it's something that has to be purchased. But I soon learned um, that if you, if you're on an email, you can recite, you know, you can dictate it to yourself. Well, I write many, many reports and it's exhausting. I have learned that if I read into it, and so here I am, screen time, right? But it will ta- you will put it in a certain way and I can then trim it. I can cut and paste it. I can do all sorts of things. And I also know that there's kids who have a hard time writing, a lot of boys these days. Just, I don't know why, but there's a lot of boys six and older who just have a tremendous time sitting down with a pencil and writing. If they're armed with a tool where they can speak into it and then see their thoughts and then shape them and then write them, even if they handwrite them, I would hate to take away some of these tools that are amazing. I do wanna say though, I absolutely agree that there is a screen time problem with our kids that is hampering them socially, emotionally. Um, and I know the studies that say um, that there is a um, a positive relationship correlation between those who's, young kids who spend incredible amounts of time on the screen and um, certain disorders, um, including ADHD, um, some spectrum, um, disorders. I know that, but I'm just saying that we, I want us to continue to be on the forefront of having the tools available. Um, and, and hoping that our educators um, know when to use them, when not to use them.
I'd like to give Mr. Margot a chance.
Please, sorry.
Thank you, Mrs. Marcus. Um, thank you, uh, Dr. Seaman for, for being here uh, to discuss this. And I know that uh, Ms. Kaber's in the back too. And I don't know if, if you have anything to add to this conversation, but I think, you know, since the old man on the board here has watched us really go from a no-technology district to a very, um, I would say not over-reliant, but reliant on technology district without significant increases in achievement. And that's what concerns me. So what I would like to ask is for somewhat of a technology audit, um, if my colleagues would support this, over the next year, that as we roll out, how often are these programs used? I'd like the data on that because if there's, we, it's great to have them, but if we don't use them, we don't need them, right? Um, and, and as you say, you know, these may not all be used by everybody. People need to be aware of that. I think most parents have a, um, some sort of either preconception or misconception about the technology use in our classrooms. Most of them are not in our classrooms. They don't see how teachers are or are not using technology. Um, and it's something that, that I myself couldn't speak to wholeheartedly. I don't go into classrooms every day, so I can't say what is being used or what's not being used. There may be teachers that don't use any technology and we don't know that. Right? So it would be nice to have that data, um, when this, these decisions come around next year, so we can be better informed. Um, I, I had mentioned it in the past, but I, I don't think I ever really harped on it, so it didn't really come to fruition this year. Um, and I wanna give staff a chance to calmly collect this information.
Can I just say, uh, Mr. Margot, just based on that point, is that, that is something that we're doing. We're already starting to get uh, that type of data from, uh, from our teachers. And, and you're right, people don't have that opportunity to be in and out of classrooms, but we do. And you're right, that just as we have a myriad of learners, uh, that is our responsibility to teach, we have that among our teaching staff too. And so while there are some teachers that we're pushing to use more technology. And so, but being in and out of classrooms, doing early surveys like we are, I just want you to be aware, this has been on our radar for a long time. And we agree that there are some things that have been mentioned this evening. We absolutely agree with.
Right.
Um, you know, I, I just caution us that, um, you know, we don't live in this world of, you know, like extremes, like taking away a one-to-one device. Cause that's absolutely not the right way to go.
Nobody up here advocating for that.
And I'm just saying, like, that's, that's oftentimes what we do when we start to hear about schools that have, you know, no technology, like
Well, I think it, it forces people to, what you're saying, Dr. Brig, it also forces people at home to really understand when my child is on a device, are they on it for a school assignment? Are they on it for their own purpose? And I don't think a lot of people at home wanna answer that question honestly. Um, even myself.
Yep.
Right? Even myself. I could say the same things. We're all, even not only for my children, but for myself. What is my use of devices at home? I try to restrict it. I try to be cognizant of it, but I don't always hit it out of the park on that one. And I don't wanna be hypocritical. Um, things that I do in my life require the use of a computer or a phone. It's that, it's something that I did, I can't do it any other way anymore, you know? Um, and I think that we, we have to be um, very aware of the fact that our, our world is very technology-based. So as we say, our mission and vision, we can't discard it, right? We can't say, well, we can get to this without any, no, we can't. We can, we can delay it. We can use it properly. We can make sure kids have skills. I, you know, I still see kids hunting and pecking on the keyboard. I don't know why. We don't have really concrete keyboarding classes. You know, that teach kids how to do that. I mean, I love the fact that I learned to handwrite and type on a typewriter before I ever had a computer, before the computer was invented. So, uh, cause when a, when a computer was invented, I'm like, oh, I know how to use this. I can type on a computer, cause I can type on a typewriter. I don't think kids appreciate that. And, and by the way, I, I miss the days, and I know I might get stoned for this, but of doing a term paper. I don't see kids doing term papers where they actually have to go and pull books from a library, read books, just to at least do that once while they're in high school would be great.
Second semester freshman year, here we come.
Yeah, so, so thank you, Mrs. Marcus, for seeing, for giving me a little bit of moments. So I, I will support this, but I would like to give direction about the next time this comes up. We have concrete data about the success of these, of these programs
And their use.
And academic success. Because look, we, we, none of us are new here. We know that our, our state scores are, are okay. But they've been okay for a long time and we're not breaking that barrier. And I don't know if this is the reason why or why not. Maybe if without this, we'd be doing worse. I don't know. But we just need to ask ourselves those questions. Thank you.
Is it my turn?
Yes, Rochelle.
Thank you. Well, I've been sitting here as a teacher who went from never having a, a computer in a classroom and taught science and I think I did it very successfully. And then I arrived at the math program many years later and had to learn how to try to use some of the computer stuff with the math. And it was very difficult for me because I really felt like I, I wasn't very good at it, but I did the best I could. But I would have to tell you that as, I would hate to have to say to a teacher, you can't use this tool anymore when it was very successful for them, taking away the discretion that they would have to use what they feel will help them teach the class. And that's the bottom of the line. I'm not talking about overusing it. I'm talking about giving the teachers what tools they will need, whatever that may be. And I agree with one thing that I wrote a lot of notes here. One was, I also wrote, how many teachers ought to, uh, actually use it? We need to do a survey. So I had that there. I, I wrote that before anybody even, uh, before that was said. I don't not want to handicap or handcuff a teacher who would conse- successfully use the tool and not have it at their disposal. If there's enough use of, and it, and it may be that when we start to do some more collaborative work, teachers will understand how one teacher can use it and then they can use it as successfully as the other teacher. And that is another thing that we forget that that could help. It doesn't say that you have to use that tool or that thing when you're teaching. It's a recommendation. It doesn't say that. I understand that we're talking about overuse of it at free time and things like that at home. Believe you me, I fight with my grandchildren. When we went on a trip, I'm gonna be very clear what happened. My grandson left his iPhone on the plane or his cell, whatever it was, fell out of his pocket. He left on the plane. He got to the, we got to Madden's Lodge and he didn't have a cellphone. I was thrilled. So I took my granddaughters away from her so that neither one would have it because it was only fair. And, uh, and, and they, you know what? They spent more time playing with each other, more time out at the water, more time outside and so on. And they really said afterwards, my grandson said, you know, mom or grandma, I didn't really need it.
That's great.
I mean, that's after, that's outside of school. And I agree with all the emotional and social and all of that that goes on with outside of the technology. But I would hate to think that we're going to handcuff our teachers by not giving them some of the tools that they could use to teach with more variety, with more, be successful. So I am not in, I mean, I hear what everybody's saying about what they said tonight. But I personally would not do that to a teacher.
But Rochelle, we're talking about our student learners and I think that as a board in making this about the teachers, we're looking in the wrong direction completely. We, we have heard the science. We're all saying that we agree that it's too much is bad. And yet nobody here other than me tonight is willing to draw a line in the sand and say, well, let's do something about it now for this coming fall. And I really do think that we should take the time to go one by one and really have some understanding of what we are authorizing. I will give you an example. We, we know that the worst of it is the flipping. The flipping is the worst for the kids. So why do we have a flip program number five?
What, what do you mean it's the worst?
It's the worst when the kids are swiping. That's the worst thing for their brains. It's the worst. We're all saying the same thing, which is that we know this is bad. But for some reason, we're all scared to do something about it. And I think that kicking the can down the road is not a good idea. And we have to be the leaders in our district. So let's draw a couple lines in the sand and progress. So to have this conversation, I'll tell you right now, for example, let's at least limit some of the items so that they're not available to the TK through second grades. For example, number fifteen, screencastify, screen recording TK through twelve. Why? Why is, please, yeah, of course. I will, but I, I really wanna go one by one. I have the time. This is what's happening in the classroom. This is what is impacting the kids' brains. This is what is turning off important parts of their brains. It is stunting their development. And I really think we should, we have the time.
I think, well, I do think that there's like
Conversation about it.
I do think that there's some, um, some places where we could be more clear about what things are. So like, the screencastify, I think you asked a really good question about TK second. That's why I've been sort of like
I would like for there to be very limited tech use in TK through second as an example. And I'm not trying to inhibit what a teacher can use, but I am trying to limit almost down to zero of the technology that's in the hands of a four, five, six, seven-year-old. So the, my first question is, what technology are the youngest using?
Okay, can I, you okay with me answering that?
Yes, please.
Well, I'm gonna throw out one, like ESGI is our way of being able to identify and monitor student growth for those younger ages. And that's a purchase that we brought to the district probably four years ago or five years ago. Yeah, to be able to assess our students in our earliest grades because we don't have data on those students, similar to like when we came to you last year asking to advance NWEA up into the secondary arena.
Yes, sir.
So we could have, we could have data on ninth, tenth, and eleventh grade students to, to monitor the progress. So, um, I wanna, I wanna kinda go back to this again, um,
But, but Dr. Seaman, that's not my question. Because I'm not trying to handcuff the teachers. I'm not trying to restrict their ability to assess. I'm trying to get my hands around what technology are the TK through second graders using? How many iPads are in each room? What programs are they using, et cetera? And why are we doing that? Let's just start with that subset, TK through two, what's happening in terms of technology? And again, I'm not talking about the teacher putting a video on, the teacher using YouTube to show them something. This is not about the teachers. Let's, don't go there, guys. It's not about the teachers. This is about the kids. So what is happening in terms of
Education.
I'm a five, I understand that, but that's where we have to come in and we have to be very cognizant of the tools that we're providing. I'm a five-year-old. What do I have access to?
Well, let's, let's flesh that out. I also wanna hear from Ms. Kaber.
Alright, flush it out.
Hi.
Hi.
Um, I think it's a really good question because I feel like the iPads that we give to our TK second graders are the most like the phones. Right? Like clearly it's the biggest issue.
Now we're getting somewhere.
I do think that a lot, what's on here is um, teacher usage and it says TK twelve because we need to give licenses to the teachers of TK through twelfth grade. So one of those would be screencastify. That means that, um, my computer as a, as a Ms. Kaber, I have one, like my computer ca- like casts up there and it projects. So, um, every single teacher needs access to that. If they're gonna use what they have on their laptop and project it onto those Viewsonics.
Right, so it's not a game.
So I put a T next to that one. It's for the teachers.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I can, we can go through like all of those things. But, um, to answer your question like specifically, from this list of things that are going on TK to second grade, Book Creator is on there. Um, that's a publishing piece where they, um, have already written and then they're typing into something and adding pictures. If they've written a book, it creates a they've already created a book and they're publishing in that way.
On the iPad?
Yeah, on an iPad.
So how many iPads do we have?
We have one-to-one. So if we have twenty kids in the classroom, we have twenty iPads. And each student has their own piece that they use that they, because we have an overlapping, like overriding um, login, it's logged into them. So that student is So that student is there. It's their own piece. They're not getting each other's. They're not learning about, like, how to, they don't have to log in. They're like using their own piece. They push the book creator button and they're using it.
But more so than that.
Has a, every four-year-old in our district has an iPad?
Yes.
But, but let's talk about.
Opt out?
It's about access. They have access to the iPad. This is a different conversation than what we're having.
But Ms. Kaber, so, so with what you're describing, that sort of app, they might be able to write words, write sentences, and then eventually turns it into a templated book, which is extremely exciting to a writer. So we could take that away from the four or five-year-olds, but, and we could say, okay, we're not gonna do that. We're, here's a bunch of crayons. Here's, here's a paper. Because of the train already leaving, unfortunately because of the pandemic and the way kids.
The train, it does, the train is not the point.
Judy, try it. Take a bunch of crayons and paper and you.
I did it on Saturday and Sunday.
Your kid sounds amazing. I mean, that is outstanding. I would be so happy. But she's gonna go over to someone's house and there will be, unfortunately.
Irrelevant what she's doing at somebody's house. This is our responsibility to close the gate on these things. There is no good reason that every four-year-old in our school district has a one-to-one access to a device. And it should be noted to the families that they are allowed to opt out of using them.
But that kid is gonna have a hard time on the writing lesson that they're doing altogether.
I mean, they could.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to wrap this up because I think, um, there's two things here being discussed. One, we do survey the teachers on time. We did it last year. We provided the data on how much the teachers are utilizing devices in TK through fifth grade because this exact same question came up last April. We provided the data. Almost ninety percent of the teachers were utilizing devices less than thirty minutes each day. So that could be utilizing it from differentiating from reading to allowing them to create a book. Okay, so there's that piece of the puzzle. We're gonna survey again, I promise you.
I trust you.
I, so, so there's that piece of surveying in, in instructional time, and I come from the opposite direction of draining instructional time on utilizing the device. Not even as much as how much they're facing the device. I want relationships and I want our teachers talking with our kids, which they're doing, right? Building those relationships, allowing them to critically think. That's part of the Danielson framework for teaching is what we're moving towards within our evaluation system. In that alone, it states in, um, components two and three around the critical thinking, student engagement. And so that even helps us move a slightly away from this. The list that we brought for recommendation, also each of them, we have user accounts for that me, the I4 coaches, Sandy Sosie go through. And we're not bringing recommendations to of a, a thirty thousand dollar program that we don't already know that we're using, that kids have logged in. And we have data to support that it is supporting the right students. Whether it's a student with an IEP and it's supporting their goals, we have that data, you guys. We have it, I promise you. I, I understand, uh, what happened earlier. We could have a totally different discussion around how do we support parents in decreased screen time at home?
That's a different conversation.
To opt out of a iPad or a device. They have every right to do so.
Well, that's a good step in the right direction.
We provide it so that we, it's access to all, so that we were not, we're not saying, here we have three, you get the three. And then you guys don't get any. We're equipped.
The taxpayer money is paying for every four-year-old in this school district to have an iPad. And I think that is exorbitant.
But then again, it's, it's access though. It's, it's not like you, it's not like here's a textbook.
I, I understand, I understand that it's access, but I don't agree with it. And I don't know how anybody after listening to the data in their heart, in their mind, really thinks that it's a good thing. It's just like the, the train left the train station, so then it continues. It's because of the pandemic.
Meaning the advances have gone and skyrocketed. Go to some of the top private schools in Manhattan, you won't believe what goes on in there.
I cannot believe that a child, one, one week, born one week earlier, would have continued in preschool. But now they're in TK because of the universal TK program. And so now we're taking away that ability for their mind to develop and grow in an analog, independent way in this way.
Wait, how do you know we're doing that? Why do you say, how, how do you know, what do you mean we're taking away their ability to learn in analog?
You were with me when we heard Dr. Taviev's speech last year, her presentation. And the information was very mind-opening and eye-opening in terms of the impact that the technology has on the way the brain grows or doesn't grow. And literally portions of the brain get shut down when technology is introduced too early. This is the science.
But, but Judy.
Me, this is the data. This is the science.
Judy, and, well, I wanna let. I wanna let Sarah talk and then I wanna respond.
For just a minute, just like a few minutes. Um, so I, I just wanna say that like the most important thing about putting technology in our kids' hands is that they're creators and not consumers, okay? So that is the most important thing, is that we do not put technology in our kids' hands for the purpose of them consuming information and looking at that.
Passive and zoning out and getting addicted, absolutely.
Most of what Dr. Taviev spoke about last year was about social media and about, um, being, being swiping, like that flip piece. And about, um, the consuming of like negative images and how it impacts us. So we're looking at things and want, and we go to Mr., to Dr. Seaman, sorry, um, to ask for money to be spent on things that will help us to create in a way that couldn't be done without technology. And there's very few things on this list that, um, the TK kid, kids actually have in their hands and TK through second. I also wanna, sorry, assure you that there is not a single classroom at my school that is going directly to typing on a computer or on an iPad before going through a writing process with paper and pencil. And then using the iPad or computer to publish, just like we did when we used like the Apple two Es and the typewriters and all of those things.
And also Ms. Kaber, they have drafting on papers. They have to present in pairs. I mean, it's amazing what you have kids doing through collaborative learning, even when they're five or six years old. And that is all beautiful. Now, when that stuff goes out the window because of technology, it's horrible. But it is amazing when you look at the writing process that doesn't involve technology and I know that's what, that's what goes on.
Absolutely. So just so that we're looking at it for the TK two kids, um, just the numbers, like, am I on the wrong number? I'm sorry. Um, number two we use. Number three is a teacher use to, to explain something. It's a video that would last three to five minutes to explain a topic. It might come up if there's a topic that comes up into TK, um, TK two, uh, that's Brain Pop. Um, uh, three, that's three. Four, breakout EDU, we're not using EdPuzzle, we're not using, um, peer assessment, we're not using. ESGI is T, as a teacher tool. Um, it allows the teachers to sit one-on-one and collect the same data, meaning that the kids are, um, looking at sounds and letters and asking them in a, in a specific order. Um, it, it really is helpful in TKK and one to, for assessment. Um, we don't use formative assessment. Generation Genius is a tool that our science teachers use as part of their science curriculum in their science lab. So, um, anybody might use that. Um, Kami's not being used. Um, right, so the TK doesn't go to science lab, but other than that, our K one-two kids do get Generation Genius when it's used as part of, you can see it's like educational videos again, like Brain Pop, that are short videos to explain like how a seed might.
Force. They really reinforce learning.
Absolutely. But it's, but it's in a teacher hands. Um, the same thing is like with mystery science, that's the same sort of way, um, it's being used. Near Pod and Full Caber are not being used. Newsala's not being used. Screencastify again as a teacher tool. Seesaw is being used, um, as a digital portfolio. Again, it's a way that parents are communicating with teachers in real time about what's happening. Mostly in the younger grades of TK and K, they're taking pictures of all that play-based things that you can't really capture in, on their phone or on their iPad and then sending it to parents, um, of their own children. And then parents can comment back if they want to during the day.
Communication tool.
It's a communication tool and a digital portfolio. So students, um, in first grade or, um, even kindergarten might take a picture of a final assignment and then they might write what they're proud about. Um, they might type right into there about a sentence about why they picked that as their favorite piece. And then it becomes part of their digital portfolio that they can then send home and capture.
Which is also part of, part of their growth though, over the year. So you can see where they were, you know, to, you know, at the end of the year.
And the only other thing on this list is iReady, which starts in kindergarten, um, which is a.
So very few things are actually being used.
Are there any games, just games, straight games? Cause that's what we did.
Straight games. If you want me to talk about, I don't know all of them, but things like, they're used really infrequently. They're used, um, like very irregularly, like Ms., Dr. Seaman said, I'm gonna have to use it. Um, that, um, it's less than thirty minutes a day. But some of the pieces, like, I don't, not a hundred percent familiar with ABC Mouse, but something like ABC Mouse versus, um, a worksheet. And I am so excited that Simone made that forty-eight hour, um, project, which sounds amazing. But when I'm thinking about giving a student a worksheet at TK versus, you know, paper and pencil, which is also developmentally not appropriate, like for pencils in their hands and that sort of way and to complete a worksheet versus like the, the thing that the technology game does or the math game does is allows them to think in that bigger picture. Remember when we came in to present about like low entry, high ceiling? It allows them to like play a game about math, like moving things and showing what they're, what they know and how they know and breaking things apart in a way that in a, in a paper and pencil, it might say four plus three equals seven.
Done. It's static. It doesn't change. It's dead.
Right. But if you're on a computer or an iPad, you can see four o, apples and then three more on the floor. And then you're putting the three apples into the bin and they're trying to figure out now how many do you have? Or how many do you need to get to that magic number that's on there? So it's more interactive and it's asking them to show how they know that they're doing it, right?
And they can repeat modules. You didn't understand that lesson? You have it repeated. You have it repeated for the grown-up in the room. You can have it in another language. It's incredible.
So I wanna, I just wanna bring up an example as years and years ago, teachers would use chalkboards, right? That's, that's, that was the implement in, in relating material to a student, chalkboards. Um, some point marker boards came along and so did overhead projectors. Now, overhead projectors were a game changer because you can prepare everything beforehand and save time. And time would be more time you could spend teaching. And that was brought to us by the wonderful world of technological advances. So I think in this conversation, we have to separate what's a technological advance that is a tool for teachers to be more effective and what creates wasted screen time. I think the big thing that's happening in the, in the world right now is social media and personal devices have taken over. And we're, we're throwing up our hands and saying, well, schools shouldn't have screen time. Well, let's.
Throwing the baby out with the bathwater.
Let's, let's slow down the role. No, 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 no. I'm not saying you are, Judy. I didn't say you are. I didn't say you are. I said, I said, from comments we heard tonight, there's this push against technology. And there should be a push against some technology. We all stated up here that.
No question.
We, we, we heard what the, the parents that spoke tonight said. I don't disagree with them, but I would say, let's first look into our own homes and see how we are managing it before we tell other people how to manage it. And we need to understand what is going on in the classroom. If you're saying there's less than thirty minutes a day and you're saying out of these list of twenty-two software things, maybe two are being used in a TK classroom, there's a good chance we don't have a problem with screen time in a TK classroom. I went through your open house at Hawthorne and I saw an intensive amount of student-generated work, not computer-generated, student-generated. I saw manipulatives in the rooms to, to handle science, to handle math. I didn't see any evidence that technology had taken over instruction in those classrooms. Was it used by some teachers as a wonderful tool instead of a chalkboard, instead of an overhead projector? Yes, it does replace those things. And therefore it seems that students are staring at a giant screen instead of a chalkboard or an overhead projector. But nobody complained when the overhead projector came out. People thought it was great because it made everything more efficient. So I think people need to understand what exactly is going on in a classroom. Ask if you can visit a classroom and observe and watch and say, I'd like to see, especially as a board member, you have the right to go do that. If you're gonna invest in technology, you should ask to go see a classroom and see how things are used, how the iPad is used in the hands of a kindergarten. You could go all week and maybe they never pick up an iPad. You'll never know. But it's worth checking out, um, before we have this conversation anymore, because then we're truly informed. And that's when we make the best decisions.
Okay, board members, what would you, what would you like to do at this point? Um, I don't want to.
I'd like to call to question.
Okay, so procedurally.
That's fine. I don't, I think the, the motion has been made and I'm certainly in favor of so many of these, espe, especially the assessments. So I see what you're trying to do, but I will tell you truthfully, honestly, to know that every single student has a one-to-one device in the TK through second grades doesn't sit right with me.
We're not voting on that.
It doesn't matter. It's connected to this.
So let's vote for this item, um, if that's okay.
And can we give an instruction to please look into it and try to reduce in the earlier years?
Or what we could also suggest is that if there, I know you guys started to give a cursory definition or, you know, in layman's terms of what these are. That's another thing is, is if you wanted to say, you know, if you made two columns or whatever and you said on the side what these are and the application, that might be helpful as well. I don't, would you want that, like more of an explanation?
The descriptions say what it is.
That's true, that's true.
It's not necessarily clear what is a teacher tool, which is not my issue at all, versus what is being used by the students. But I, I do think that we need to limit. And I, I do not understand the purpose of having iPads in the classroom before third grade. And then at third grade, you jump to the laptop.
I, I just wanna say that like I really support that, um, I understand what you're trying to do. I really appreciate that that's what you're trying to do. I really think that like there are tools in terms of what we're using for school that would be limited if we took devices out of students' hands, um, including things like assessment like iReady. But I just wanna say in this manner, like you have a student in that, those grades, you have a child in those grades. And if it's surprising to you that there, that they have one that belongs to them, that should say, also say something, right? About how infrequently we're using it, um, because you are surprised to learn that, right? So that is actually great news, because it's not enough that it's talked about every day or part of what's happening, what, um, your child's coming home to talk about or to share about. Like mostly they're talking about all the other incredible things that are happening. So, um, please know that it's there as a tool when it's needed and when it's useful. Um, but it's not, and it, we are so fortunate to have that for, um, access for everybody. But you know from your own experience that it's far less than half an hour a day.
Then if that's the case, why are we spending the money on it?
That's a different, that's a different conversation.
But these things are all related and so it informs us for when we are coming to renew the iPads, should we renew them?
Right, and we can have more of a close, deep dive on that because you raised some good questions. And I absolutely don't want to disregard some of the expert, um, uh, literature that was recited to us. I just think there needs to be more of a clarification between what is pragmatic and tool-oriented versus what is just play and social media and all of the ills that we all know about. I remember my own, my oldest son, I didn't let him, let him have a phone until he was fourteen and there was a picture of him at a birthday party. Every kid had a phone, he didn't. And I said, sorry, son. You know, so I, I wanna say, I, I absolutely agree with you. I agree with some of the dangers that were mentioned today. But I also, I, I have a doctorate in education and I know some of the things that have, that have been incredible improvements in schools. That said, um, I do feel, I do recommend to the board that we move forward, so, so call a question. All in favor?
No, just, I do, one thing, I know, one thing that we have to consider though, and I always think about policy and power and exactly where you're going. I think that's our opportunity to collaborate on, when the new math framework was being proposed, we wrote numerous letters in collaboration with our parents, our Board of Education, and we got things changed. Ethnic Studies was another one where we wrote as a group, as a board, as, and, and we were able to get things changed. There are, there's legislation out there now, things like the five-day emergency closure that's going, that's a proposal from the governor. That's an example of, we have only five days from if anything were to happen within our community, that we have to be fully virtual. So when we take these considerations around an iPad in TK and say, we have five days to get things up and running for them to be able to learn remotely, regardless of the incident that happened.
For special ed services. We say that at every IEP, we need to tell them now, like in the event that there's a shutdown, just so you know, we will deliver services virtually. That is true.
And so, and that's part of that, so like from a CSBA standpoint, this is what I'm saying is, you know, that's on the governor's desk right now being considered. You know, if we were to move in this direction, that would be something then we would need to advocate to get removed. So then we aren't legally or ed code-bound to not having it. You know what I'm saying? So those are the types of discussions that are, are much larger.
To be, there just needs to be a balance, because there's, there's some imbalance for sure with technology in the world in general. Oh my goodness, I just, sometimes I wanna take my phone and just throw it so that I can have like three hours of not using it. But then I'm like, wait a minute, when did I say on that day that I was gonna, I mean?
Can you put, uh, regulations on my email?
Sure.
I mean, my technology.
Yeah, I know. Okay, so that said, can we call for the question? All in favor? I, opposed. Motion carries. We move on to superintendent report?
No, there's one more, ten F.
Sorry, ten F.
Sorry, I'll make a motion for, uh, the approval of Bricks for Kids Summer Proposal for twenty twenty-four elementary summer school.
I'll second.
I brought this up. I would like this explained because it wasn't clear how this was being put out there and who was in the class and and it it the way it was coming down and I'd like an explanation of the program.
Yep, absolutely. With the um extension of us having to provide, not us having, we have the opportunity to provide uh thirty consecutive uh days of summer school for our students that are English learner, uh qualified for Title One services and then are possibly academic deficient through our uh vetting system, whether that be test scores, uh grades, teacher recommendations or administrative recommendations. That's how we identified the students for the summer school program. Due to the length of the day and the um, I mean, we want to make it a little bit fun. Utilizing ELP, uh P, uh grant funding and L, where did Raphael go? What did I get? L R O? We got a new one. Learning Recovery Block Grant. L L E, yes, that one.
These students will be with one teacher during the day, a a group of what, twenty-five students or and then they'll be, there'll be a second grade class, a third grade class, a fourth, fourth and fifth grade class, and they have different subjects for the week and so on. Is that?
Yep, and these are the topics.
And these are students that are vetted out as being needing more instruction or and education in certain areas and so on.
Yep, and those are the themes that we have selected for the summer. Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify what this was and thank you for that information.
And we will have very limited technology, I promise. Yes.
Very limited technology. Thank you.
Lot of investment. Yes.
Thank you so much. Okay, so all, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um, now I think we brings us to our superintendent report.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Stern. And this will just take a moment to come up. And if anybody's wondering, the air conditioning works, Mr. Haas. So very quickly, I'm going to go through some uh information. This is the end of the year, so I'm certainly not uh going to touch on uh everything that um we have done uh in the past couple of weeks or what's in front of us. Um, I do want to just highlight a couple of recognitions and acknowledgements. Um, as you know, this is Jewish American Heritage Month, um, and also uh yesterday, Yom Hashoah. Um, and I just want to take an opportunity to um just just share and touch base again with you that um, you know, that we've we've really been touching uh base with the community and um and I'm really, really proud of uh the emphasis that we have had on on Holocaust education um as it pertains to curriculum, what's happening in our classrooms, but also with our teachers and our administrators as well. Um, and so this is just a, just a quick list. You know, I've touched upon this uh before, but just wanted to highlight again, um, just so many things. This is just a touch point. It's certainly not everything um that we are doing in our classrooms um and the opportunities that we have for our students uh when it comes to Holocaust education. And I think we've just really come a very long way in uh the last several years specifically. Um, and even just looking at whether it's visits or it's creating poetry and writing stories, um, you know, just TK through twelve, we just uh have uh all kinds of different projects uh that are age-appropriate, starting with the Butterfly Project, um, and then going all the way, this is just an example with just some of the eighth grade uh ELA learning targets and uh in in really um hit home for uh the type of education and um the acknowledgement um and understanding and the historical significance. Um, I think we've really come a long way. As a district, um, as you know, we've built uh some new relationships, uh or strengthened some relationships, I should say, um, with the Jewish Federation of Greater Los Angeles, um, with the Israeli American Council, um, and we have had training for our administrators um on uh the twenty-second, twenty-third of February and we just finished a really great uh professional development opportunity with our teachers, uh with some additional Holocaust education. Um, and I am just really fortunate to be able to um be asked to be selected to go on a trip to um uh Israel this summer. So just, and gosh, just a month uh or so. And I'm really excited about that opportunity. One of the things I learned through our training is the the how important it is for the community to understand um that you have a willingness to learn and that 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 you are um trying to take in as many experiences you can as an educational leader. And so that will be a once-in-a-lifetime trip for uh for me and I can't wait to be able to bring that back and share those experiences with our cabinet and our teachers as this consistently begin to evolve uh each and every year. It's also Asian-American uh Native Hawaiian and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. Um, it's also Mental Health Awareness Month. As you can see that we're just jam-packed with celebrations from uh Senko de Mayo, um, and National Foster Care Month, which is uh really important for people in our district to understand that we have a number of um foster children in the system that um are here in Beverly Hills that we're providing service to. Uh, and so hats off to those families uh and their resilience and dedication to work with us um in raising foster care uh children. Uh, we already did this, but I I just wanted to put up uh just a- again, the appreciation for our educators. As you heard tonight, um, really good, healthy dialogue about teaching and learning and what kind of experiences are uh the best outcome in the classroom. And I think that these types of discussions are really good. Um, I I really like the the opportunity to kind of go back and reflect after a lot of these conversations, to go back and and start to look at um where concerns are, where there's issues, where there's not issues, and uh these meetings actually uh provide that open dialogue. Many of you know that we don't have this opportunity to work with our board and have conversations like this every day. And so these meetings are really important as well as the dialogue and feedback that our administrative team received this evening. Uh, this is just a little bit about the Professional Development Day uh that was uh the week before last. Uh, thank you to Dr. Seaman for um really putting this all together. Um, you have, you do this each of our Professional Development Days. I had the honor to be able to work with the principals for the uh teacher evaluation um uh program and evaluation tool as that begins to roll out. So I was really glad to be a part of that. Um, and then we also had, we were able to work in three other sessions around CPR and first aid, um, the Holocaust education training uh for our teachers, and then also a student services uh update. So it was a full day of PD that was done in-house, um, and it was the highest-attended staff PD that we've had in the last seven years. So uh we're very happy about that. So teachers absolutely had an interest and was uh made a commitment to be there. And as Mrs. Marcus said before, um, you know, the more you put in, the more you put out. Our teachers did that every single session. I attended an event uh this last Sunday. I know that some of you were there in this room. Uh, it, I think we've done a really good job since reconfiguration of uh of looking at the reopening of El Rodeo, but also being really sensitive to our Hawthorne community. And um, we've had a number of events that are that are still coming up, um, but with the true sensitivity of any type of transition, whether it's for a student or for a staff member, uh, we don't take that lightly. We know that any type of move uh is also very emotional. And so uh this was an opportunity on Sunday. Uh, it was Hawthorne's last hurrah, um, and it was very well-attended and it was just people, uh, most of the people I did not know, people that had been working at Hawthorne fifty years ago, forty years ago, and it was almost, it felt like a, like a high school reunion type where people were, you know, from different decade, decades, different generations, and it was on your name tag and it was, uh, people were, you know, sharing stories. And it was just a really nice way to bring together decades of people that have had wonderful experiences at Hawthorne and come together and celebrate and share their, their just their own experiences about what they endured over those years and how education has changed and where they are today. Um, it was just a really good feeling just to be there all day. Um, many board members were able to attend this as well, the Horace Mann Elementary School Carnival. Um, a a big thank you to the PTA at Horace Mann uh and BHGF. It ju- this is, it's all hands on deck when you put a perf- this is a like commercial carnival that's happening in our school. It's like the movie Grease where, you know, school lets out and there you are. And so um, it was just a really great opportunity and uh thank you to Dr. Stern for asking me to go on that. Um, I don't even know what that is. That's like flying teacup. So that
I'm not gonna thank you.
That was really fun. That was a good one.
I like these things when I was getting
That's, that's good. Um, uh, as I talked about, just the, the, just the rollout, just the changes that are coming. Um, you know, it's been five years and um we've, we've really spent a lot of time on uh the El Rodeo opening and uh I know that that has been a big part of our strategic plan is the reopening and we have spent um a a lot of quality time on on our next steps uh with opening. And we've had several tours. This was an opportunity here for people that worked at El Rodeo, as I talked about with people at Hawthorne. Some of those same people that had been at many schools, uh, like when Mrs. Marcus was here and she was at both schools, um, that this was an opportunity for them to get a sneak peek um of the building. Um, and uh, you know, and they had an opportunity to then visit and explore, especially with people that had worked in the building previously, um, to begin talking to one another and have conversation about how impressed they were with how things were preserved and how things stayed the same and um and there were no concerns about the air quality. Glad you got that. Um, so I want to celebrate um Mrs. Marcus uh uh for being selected as a leader at LAKSTA. Congratulations, Mrs. Marcus. This is the Los Angeles County uh School Trustees Association that we belong to and um this was um uh an, an organization that was uh recognizing their leaders. It was the last meeting uh of the year last night and um Mrs. Marcus was actually nominated by another school board meeting, board member from another district that she had some interaction with, which this is so Mrs. Marcus, right? Like, and and just talking about curriculum and talking about her teaching, like that this, this gentleman then nominated her for this award and then she won this award. So I was uh very proud to be able to be um with Mrs. Marcus last night to receive this award, even though it was a very long drive to Downey. It was memorable. It was a road trip, um, but it was really well worth it and I love to see when our school district gets recognized in front of other school districts. Um, this has also been a big part of our strategic plan is to get out there, be proud of what we're doing in our school district and and celebrate it and um, you know, and just talk about it, publish it, share it. And so this is what gives us this opportunity to do that and it just adds to your myriad of selection of of uh awards. Uh, but this is a special one because this is out of eighty school districts that are are that are in um in LA County. Um, at the very next meeting, um, we have a state of the district, so it's going to be a a really comprehensive way for me to kind of tee up for you. Um, just right before we head into our strategic planning, which will be on uh June fourth, is uh that next date. So it's, it's really going to set it up nicely where we started in the uh in the beginning of the year uh to where we are now. And then the next uh board meeting will be our strategic plan and you're going to see um a lot of of really good uh information that's been embedded and shared and um and really aligned. I think that's, when I think about it, it, I've never in my career been in a place where our state of the district is so aligned with not only our LCAP, but also our strategic plan. And I don't know another district out there that can show this type of alignment and I'll be able to demonstrate that and share that with you, um, and really celebrate that with you um at our next meeting. And then I I know that uh I, we had this opportunity. I I want to thank the board again for the opportunity to um support the appointment of Mr. Waters. It's uh the right time, it's the right person, and it's the right team. And um I'm really excited to be able to uh be part of this leadership team that works so incredibly hard uh behind the scenes. Um, and uh it 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 just, we just notched it up by hiring Mr. Waters. And that is my report for this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Margot, okay. Uh, Ms. Manishari, would you like to comment?
No, thank you for the um, the great report. As always, I love hearing about it and um I know yesterday was Holocaust Remembrance Day, which is a very important day for um our community and a lot, we have a lot of Holocaust survivors and their families in our community. And I know it's been a tough day, especially with everything that's going on in the world. And so I just pray for truly world peace, uh, for lack of a better description, for everybody, um, and for everybody's safety and security, including everyone in our community. And otherwise, thank you for your report.
Sure.
Ms. Marcus?
No, I just want to thank you for a very comprehensive report. I want to thank you for taking the two hours to drive to that uh
Downey.
At that hour of the day. It was, it was a really
Did it get any coffee cake out of it at least? No, no.
No, but it will be appearing again. Uh, I'd just like to tell you that I asked Dr. Breggy, I asked, I don't think I mentioned to you, I asked Mary and I asked who nominated me for this award. I had no idea how it came about. And last night, when I was at the meeting that we went to, this young man that I met at the Waldorf Astoria with you when we went to that uh presentation by the books, um, came up to me and he said, he was the one that recommended me. And he, I, I, I was stunned. I was really stunned and I, I wrote him a note today and he answered me and we're planning to have a future meetings because we really hit it off. And I, I was very touched by it. So uh, thank you for including that in the thing. I uh, I had no idea that I was even getting an award uh until was asked to go to the meeting. So thank you very much.
You bet.
Congratulations. Well deserved. I still recall that you told me you worked in this district for fifty-five years. Fifty-five years. Well, okay, yeah, now it's sixty. Okay. Um, thank you, Dr. Breggy.
You're welcome.
And thank you for um mentioning about the Holocaust um uh day of observance and remembrance uh yesterday. Um, and I echo Ms. Manishari's um sentiments, that world peace. Um, I mean, it would sure be nice and I, I recall and I reflect that there is uh all sorts of strife in Sudan, Darfur, of course, the Middle East, um, Ukraine, and I think about them and I, but I, I thank you for bringing that up. Um, and of course, uh, Mr. Waters is a wonderful appointment. And that is all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So I'd like to make a motion for the approval of the CBA between BHUSD and the BHGA-CTA-NEA twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-seven.
I will second the motion.
Motion ba- made by Mr. Margot and seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Yes. Um, I'd like to make a motion for the resolution of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one-nine, terminating services of certificated employees as a result of reduction or discontinuation of particular kinds of services.
All second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll make a motion for the resolution of twenty-twenty-three, twenty-four dash twenty, terminating services of classified employees for lack of work or lack of funds.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. And that brings us to business and finance.
I will make a motion to approve AB twelve-hundred Public Disclosure of Proposed Collective Bargaining Agreement.
And I will second.
The BHGA-CTA.
Sorry, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Maintenance and Operations.
I will make a motion to award the bid of twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero-one-nine for building of this restroom renovation of Beverly Hills High School, I believe that's uh Building A.
Yes. Uh, I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No, aye. I just wanted to ask a quick question.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um,
It's all right.
I'd like to make a motion for the award of bid number twenty-three, twenty-four dash zero-twenty for exterior painting of Buildings A and L at Beverly Hills High School. for exterior painting of Buildings A and L at Beverly Hills High School.
I'll second.
I'll second the motion.
Can I ask a quick question on that?
Yeah.
What color scheme are we looking at as we're moving forward with the finishing B3 and B4? Not that I'm getting involved with design. I'm just curious. Because sometimes when people look at a building and they go, oh my God, the board let them paint that.
At the next board meeting, I was planning on presenting some options. I was going to get together with our team. We've already got some preliminary options that we've designed. And we have a few weeks to make that decision preliminarily. My thought is that we leave the STC building or the L building basically the way it looks now. And then to take the A building and blend it in with the B building using a similar color as the B building. So as you drive in, it looks similar, but we'll present some options and.
Just out of curiosity, because Building L is connected to A and they're going to have a different color scheme?
Well, they do right now.
I know they do right now.
And so we'll have that option. We'll, we'll, we'll present some actual mockups that you'll be able to see and approve. We've already got some mockups preliminarily. I just wasn't ready to present it this.
Are you going to be, I'm assuming we're using scaffolding for this?
They'll be using large lifts, equipment, eighty-five, eighty-five foot boom lifts.
Okay. So we're going to be doing that over the summer at the plant?
Hopefully, starting literally May 31st or Saturday the first.
Okay.
I have a question on that. In the diagram, in the information, you talk about Building L and then you say S, the STC.
STC.
The question that I have is, that's all of this building is L actually? And that it's not this, just this one area on this side? That's the Science and Technology STE building?
This entire building that we're in right now is the Science and Technology Center.
The entire building that connects to A, what?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Including the north elevation and the west elevation.
You switch to just L and I had trouble thinking, well, it does form an L. Maybe he's only talking about one part of the building.
No, it's actually designated as the L building. But most people here refer to it as the STC. So I apologize for confusing anything with that.
Okay.
Which has the EDC inside the STC.
Exactly.
Sounds like a bunch of diseases.
I can't fix that.
All right. So all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We move on to planning and facilities.
I will move for the improvement of an agreement for the pre-construction services with Swintonton for the Beverly Hills High School Building C, the athletic building, project FAC 2023-24-004.
All second?
I have questions.
Okay, question.
Question?
Yes. So right now we're only approving the pre-construction services, correct? We don't, we are not approving a fully lease leaseback contract. Do we have a lease leaseback number yet or is that going to follow pre-construction services? Yeah, we, we do not have a lease leaseback or a GMP yet. So this is just for the pre-construction. The GMP will follow.
Is Swintonton the one that's going to be doing the reconstruction?
Yes. And we have two gentlemen here from Swintonton right now.
So that's why we, I was just asking about these.
Your real swinters.
Nice to meet you. We'll look forward to meeting more often.
So they were awarded the, the entire lease leaseback, but we're doing it in sections. Correct. As we've done in the past. Okay, so here's where I have to ask because I have been pretty vocal about this particular project with the removal of the parking. So I wanted to understand if we're going to move forward with this because I am an avid supporter of the athletic building. But I have a hard time building, as I said before, a new building without parking included. What are some of the roadblocks preventing the, the parking lot from going in? I know that budget was one of them. So we'll take budget aside because budget is something that, or available funds, I should say. Funding is something that can be worked out later on, maybe with some growing pains. But removing it eases that stress on the project, removing the parking lot does that. But for me, that was, that, that's an argument that can be made, one that I don't agree with. But okay, what else are we looking at with the challenges of the parking lot in this building? That was the main challenge was the budget. So, yeah, sure.
Good evening and nice to see every one of you. There were some other hurdles. So one is the earthwork, the amount of the earthwork that dictates by excavation of the parking lot, which requires DTSC approval because of the, some contaminations that we have in the soil in the area. The DTSC mitigation plan has not been approved yet and had, wasn't approved never since we are on board. We, modifications that we made to the program is going to reduce significantly the amount of the earthwork and make this process of the approval hopefully faster because we are going to have a lot less excavation, a lot less dirt that needs to be hauled off from the site. And that basically helps the process. So that was another hurdle that we are working through that. Also, because we are going to do less earthwork and less hauling of dirt, the process of AQMD permitting is going to be hopefully more streamlined.
If it's not, if we don't, or are we confident that DTSC and AQMD will play ball by?
Yes, we already had conversations with both agencies. And again, unless something crazy happens, we are confident that we are going to get to approval.
And what kind of savings do you, can you estimate that part of it? Beside the construction of the underground lot, this portion of it, the earthwork, what, what portion of that would?
I think we presented that in one of the early, I don't have it on top of my head, but I'm going to say it's going to be in the neighborhood of $7 million just because of the earthwork.
Just the earthwork?
Yes.
So that's not the actual parking lot?
Yes.
Okay.
Because the earthwork is not only applicable to Building C, it's basically all around the site. A portion of that, again, I wish I had the question earlier, but I think easily about like $4 million is going to be associated with Building C and the retaining walls.
And when do you think you'll get the approvals from, I think DTSC will be first?
I think it's going to be a parallel process. We are hoping to start construction before end of the year and we are hoping to have the approval by that time.
Will the lack of approval hold up construction or do you feel that we'll get it in time?
We already have a preliminary approval for the retaining wall. So we can start if even that process.
Still start? Okay. All right. And you, do you recall at all what the overall savings in removing the lot was?
Removing the parking lot?
Yeah.
It, it's a combination of factors. So between, it's not by removing the parking structure. We are not only saving in the building, we are going to save from the retaining walls too. So I think I have a note here if you want.
Were the retaining walls re-engineered?
It's being done right now as we are speaking. DLR is working on that. That's part of the.
So they're reducing the scope because they don't.
It's going to, the height of the retaining wall is going to be significantly lower because of the less earthwork. Originally, DTSC was dictating that we are going to have five or seven feet clean soil on top that we clarified that we don't need to do that. And we are just going to stick with one feet clean soil on the top. And we know, we have the conversation of the clean soil in one of the board meetings. It's just clean soils mean that the soil is not contaminated. So if you give me a second, I can give you the exact amount of both savings. So we are talking about with the combination of the retaining wall and building is about, I want to say, this is six and so it's about thirteen to fourteen million dollars.
All right. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Okay, thank you. Oh, you have a question? Sure.
Yeah, just for Dr. Breggy, operationally, I think it's going to mean that our tennis courts go away. And so it would be, maybe we can reach out to our friends at Rexon Parks and see if they can accommodate our, you know. What's that?
Aren't we building up on the upper field?
Oh, well, that'll be ready, but maybe not in time because the tennis courts come back online June 2025.
Yes, our goal is just to have at least some courts available, but it would be great.
We're, we're already looking into that. So we've had some conversations and so we, yeah, trying to save a couple and, you know, that on top of, you know, making sure that we do have enough, that we're already working with the city and some of our partners to see if we can utilize some other space.
How many are there at Roxbury Park? Is it four? Yeah, too, too few.
Well, we have to destroy all of our, our, our parking, well, don't we get to keep a couple of tennis courts?
Two. Two.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Hopefully it's only for a couple months.
Yeah. It's worth it.
Rafael, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So if we're looking at a difference of thirteen to fourteen million, what would be the difficulty in acquiring those funds down the line?
Well, you have very, there's limited resources that can be obtained for, for those types of funds. The only, the only type of money that the district receives for facilities really comes in through whether it's modernization funding or developer fees. And developer fees are very restrictive in the way that we could use them. We get probably about a million dollars per year, maybe a little less, depending on what year it is, in developer fees. So it, it would be difficult to get to that number. You'd have to wait a lot of years. The only other source would be a bond, which, which you could, you know, but then that involves a whole other process.
We have to put a bond on the back burner right now. What about a COP?
A COP is a possibility, but those revenues would have to then come from, or the payment of the COP would have to come from general fund revenues or from developer fee. Depending on what type of building it is, you can potentially use developer fees to make those payments too. But already as it is, based on, even with the cost savings that Mr. Solari was mentioning, we already are tapping into looking at utilizing most of our modernization eligibility at the high school. And in order to even get to that, we'd probably have to enter into a COP just to get to kind of bridge us through that timeframe.
So we're still going to need some, some form of a COP?
Yes, most likely.
Because of the statement of age and funds?
Yes, because those funds will probably most, you know, we can apply starting next year. Those funds will not come in until probably two or three years after that. So in that timeframe, we'll, we'll have to potentially enter into a COP. But we are again, because it's for mainly Building C, which is, has instructional components to it, we are looking into using our developer fee funds to pay for those payments.
What's the interest on a COP?
Uh, I think, well, I, I mean, the last one that we recorded was like, I think, I want to say it was like 6.2, somewhere around there.
That's, that's significant.
But I, I, again, I, I'm, don't quote me on that because those numbers change pretty drastically here. It used to be where it was pretty flat, but now it's all over the place.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, just for, for, I'm still having a hard time wrapping my head around doing this without the parking lot. I know, I know it's saving money. I know it's saving time at this point. I know we don't. Either way, we didn't have DS, DTSC approval coming into this point in time and whether we were going to do one or the other. It wouldn't have changed even if we stayed with the original plan with the one-story parking. We still wouldn't have had the approval. That's correct, right?
Yeah. And I think the upper, the, the, the good thing though is we'll have the parking in the upper fields projects. We'll have parking there. I think the concern is, right, like, how do you get those people from there to the athletic building? And I think that's something that we could work on logistically, right? What would be the best way to, you know, have people that park in the upper fields come down?
I, when are we going to have that kind of egress laid out? Because that I would really love to know before, at least we move forward with the full project. We can go into pre-construction services because it's going to happen anyway. And most of it, like I said, does apply to a building, which I do support the building itself. So, but when are we going to know about that egress from that upper parking lot down? And how that's going to affect security and all of that stuff?
Sure. DLR is currently working on revising those designs. So we have weekly meetings with them. We also opened up the conversation with City of Beverly Hills as you mentioned regarding the access from the Olympic to the parking, to the parking lot that's going to sit on the south side. So pretty soon, I, I, I don't want to give you a date, but I think in the next couple of months, we are going to come forward and explain the access, like how the pedestrian can access from the south side parking lot to each one of the buildings and the fields.
So colleagues, I would like to ask that, that if we go forward tonight with this, that we really pay attention to what Fonda Solari is going to bring to us later on about this. One, the Olympic Boulevard and Heath Avenue driveway, whatever, access. And the far, as far as walking pathways down to all the athletic facilities because we have to be prepared not, maybe not to like what we see. I just want everybody to be aware of that because we're spending way too much on security and efforts around our campus to just let that go and say, well, you know, that's it, you know? Because if we had had the parking, we wouldn't have this problem. Everybody would be down at that side of campus. Everybody would have access there. We can control the flow of people. So just remember, because we're going to have to allow cars onto campus now to get to these sporting events, which we have all week. So.
You know, I appreciate that you want to do the, the best for the kids and for our community. So I'm with you 100% and as somebody who is using, you know, the parking lot on the weekends for BHBL and I see the commotion all the time. I do understand what you're saying. But I have to say that a couple of weeks ago, that parking lot next to the tennis courts was closed down for the run or it was an event that you were hosting with the kids who were doing a run or a marathon or something. And I thought of you and I'm sorry that I didn't share it with you earlier, but the impact was not as heavy as I thought it was going to be. I was having heartburn about it and things were actually okay. And so let's, you know, I'm, let's see what they come up with. And, and I also was thinking, because I know in the past, Mr. Stewart has expressed that there's definitely not enough student parking on campus. And I think that having the lot in the back for the students to access and be closed in for a closed campus, I feel like that's worth something as well for our, you know, Monday through Friday operations.
You're talking about under C? Under C, no.
No, meaning the, the surf, the two surface lots that will be at the Olympic side.
Reneco site, parking lot.
And so it's been on my mind because I also use those parking areas. But not having it a few weeks, weeks back, it was not as, as controversial as I thought it would be. It was comforting.
Okay. We'll wait and see. Thank, thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to thank again our new partners in crime, Swintonton team for being here tonight.
They got to prove themselves. No, they have to prove themselves.
And, and just one more thing on that too. Just, we went through a very intensive process. We had very reputable vendors and contractors and people that came by and, and honestly were very happy. They, they really shined through and we're really excited about this and hope that you will approve it. So, thank you.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. I'll make a motion for the approval of agreement for pre-construction services with Swintonton for the Beverly Hills High School Building C Athletics Project FAC 2023-24-004.
All second?
Discussion. All in favor?
Wait, 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 wait. We just approved A, right?
Yeah, we just approved A. You, you wanted to make a motion on B.
Yep.
We did A. So I'll make a motion.
I didn't hear. I thought.
No, she, she accidentally read A. I'll make a motion for the approval of use of contingency funds in the Pro West contract for the AV changes in Building B4 Dance Room at the high school.
I'll second.
That's what I thought. Okay.
I'll second. Dr. Stern? I seconded.
I made the motion. Can I ask a question?
Please.
What? I, I read this like 10 times. What, what, what is exactly going on here? Uh, well, so as you know, or you might not know, but for the use of contingency funds on the B3, B4 project, we have to request board approval similar to a change order, but we don't have change orders on this project. The actual work that's required is we made some changes to the dance room that required AV and electrical upgrades. And that was not part of the original contract. That's kind of like the brief way of putting it. So we can't. So we made the changes?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the acceptance and filing of a notice of completion and release of retention for the BVMS parking lot repairs.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Marcus. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It looks nice, by the way.
Okay. I'll make a motion for the approval of Amendment Number Six to the Agreement with RMA Group for Materials Testing and Inspection Services at BHHS Buildings B3 and B4.
I'll second the motion.
No, Ms. Marcus, you can have it.
Okay, so motion made by Ms. Dr. Stern and seconded by Ms. Marcus.
These are, these are from DSA changes?
Yes, it's mainly result of the C C Ds and unforeseen conditions, so we have additional special testing requirements. So to answer your question, short answer is yes.
Okay, thank you.
You could do the next one, Noah.
I want you to do the next one.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Are we voting on this one, though?
Yeah, good idea.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
I will make a motion for approval of proposal with T L S Choice LLC for a new preschool playground area at Horseman Elementary School.
I'll second the motion.
Quick, just a, a quick question on this, I'm sorry, well. So I keep hearing these rumors about the library, and it relates to the preschool, that the library at, oh, at Horseman is gonna close and become preschool classrooms. And I keep telling people, I'm like, I, I think we would've heard that, I'm not hearing that, I don't know where it's being generated from. So just because we have a spotlight, can we clarify this?
Yeah.
So I stop getting phone calls.
Sure. So, I, what we're trying to do is keep the, um, preschool, the new preschool classroom, uh, at Horseman, along with the special education preschool classroom at Horseman. Um, we're trying to keep those, all those programs in the same building. So that we have our youngest learners from preschool TK and Kinder all in the same building. And so, we're on the edge with a couple of sections, um, for, uh, for TK and Kinder that could potentially move into the, that, that's why the library came up, as a, as a possibility. We're trying not to move the music room. Um, uh, and we're trying to get creative, because we would like to keep everybody in that same building. It's that, we're sharing some of the instructional assistance, we're sharing some resources. And so, um, you know, there has been some discussion about what is the possibility here. I mean, the library is really like three classrooms. It's, that's, it's, the library is three classrooms. It's, it's, you know, very basic, um, and if needed, to keep all of our kids together for programming and resources. There, there was even a possibility of using just part of the library, because they're not using all of that space. So, it's, it's just, it's gone back and forth as far as it's, it all comes down to, um, the sectioning that we have.
But if it was gonna, if it was gonna be implemented this fall, wouldn't the process would've had to start already?
Well, I mean, yeah.
Is that something you could do last minute?
There, there, there are some things that we could do last minute. Um, you know, there are, there are some teachers that have already agreed that, um, having a divider in there. Um, you know, classes are coming into the library, there's not, there's, there's not classes that are being taught in the library. So, but there are some options that we looked at where, um, the teachers were asked for their input and support if, if we did have to move into like a part of the library. Um, but it's, we're, we're just right on the edge of, of a couple of sections. Uh, but we're, we're trying to get as creative as we can, we're, and again, we're trying to not move the music room, uh, if we don't have to. But, um, you know, to accommodate, uh, the special education program and preschool from the city, that, that has changed, uh, from our last conversation.
So my only request would be if decisions were made that will affect the school to a degree, to a large degree, like moving a library. And I assume the library would be moved, not canceled, right?
Right, oh yeah, I mean.
So, just if the communication on that, because the B H R M, the Beverly Hills rumor mill, is moving very quickly.
Yeah.
And I can't keep up with it, I don't know if you guys can, but it would be great to have a little ground cover and at least get something out to the community, if, if a decision, because stuff, if those conversations were happening, they were happening at Horseman with leadership and all of you guys, and somebody overheard it and leaked it to this person, leaked it to that person, and then, and then we get a phone call. And that's not the right flow of information.
And I thought that we were soon, when we had more solidified news, we're gonna share about improvements happening at Horseman. And so, perhaps it can all be in one communication.
Exactly, and I, I think it's more of a timing thing, um, that, um, Ms. Collins, when we get conversations every day about the, the sectioning over there. And, uh, you know, there's things in progress right now, like, uh, transfer requests from one building to another. And so, that's, there's a lot of that that's happening right now, as far as from an operational perspective. But that would be something that I would share with you. It's just that, when you get input from others, that's the risk that you take. Is that, you know, when you, when you start, right, and, and understandably so, you know? But we would like to, to keep our youngest kids together, and, and that is just, you know, for the reasons I already specified. But, um, I'll let you know, it's just, it's really gonna come down to, um, you know, if we have to open up another section.
No, thank you, I appreciate you spending the time explaining that to us, so.
Sure.
So we're a little bit more clear, just, it says, we're getting calls about it.
Right.
I'm like, ah.
Right, so. That's why, thank you for asking it publicly, so that I could.
And I just jumped on an agenda item to be able to do that, but let's not forget to vote for it, okay?
Okay, Husky Village would be cute.
Um.
Just like we've got our little hero village.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion for the approval of resolution twenty-three, twenty-four, eighteen, approval for the A B eight four one Cal shape, governing body resolution and grant agreement.
I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Margot, seconded by Ms. Manishari. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Brings us to professional official business. I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a C S B A twenty twenty-four Annual Education Conference Workshop Proposal submitted by Noah Margot.
I'll second.
Motion made by Dr. Stern, seconded by Mr. Margot. Thank you, by the way, Noah. Um, all in favor?
No, I, I'd like to say a few words. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask for more information, because I didn't see any attachment. I might've missed it.
Is there something, I remember, Mike, did you send something out to the board, Michael, with the?
A few sentences about it.
Yeah, that, that's all it is, is a few sentences.
We're holding one second, let me see if it, if it went on there.
It was on, um, the board connection, but I mean, just a summary.
Yeah, I just don't know.
Yeah, that's basically what it is.
Why it was.
Well, either way, we had fun last year at the C S B A, and I will be happy to join you again this year, schedule permitting.
Can I just say, yeah, it was, um, I, I don't remember if it was on last year's or not, because it was, it's, it's essentially just really the topic area.
Right.
At this point.
At this point, I mean, nothing, there's, there has not been a presentation that's created, so.
Okay.
There's really nothing to attach.
C S B A will come back to us and say, okay, sounds like a great idea.
Tell us more.
Then, then we create it.
Has it been awarded?
I would like a little collaboration on this.
We, absolutely.
I, I, I was kind of taken aback by this, and, and I, I, I know I wasn't able to participate in last year's, and I know it was very successful, and, and you did a great job with it, but I sort of felt like that there wasn't a community of input of the board. So I was hoping that, to make sure that this year, that we all had something, uh, in, in terms of what the, I don't even know what the topic is, and we, we are approving something that we're gonna present, I think that it should have a little more input. I'm not opposed to it, of course, I'm going to vote for it, but I do feel that I would've liked to have been more involved in.
In the early stages here.
Yeah, I, I felt kind of like I wasn't part of this, and we are a member, we are a board member, and I would've liked to have more, uh, consideration.
Right, we all, we all received the same email from C S B A about the calls for proposals with the, um, the deadline last Friday. So, um, I had, uh, jumped in, cuz I had done it last year, so I jumped in with Michael and said, let's just send a proposal in. It has to do with, um, district communi- district communications and how, and how districts can better manage their communications. That's gonna be the, the, um, gist of our, our workshop, we haven't, and if we're approved, we can all write the workshop.
Okay, that's what I want.
Right. But this is just like a two-sentence thing, you send in to see if they bite.
Okay, thank you.
And we had a deadline, we had a deadline, so we just kinda did it as quickly as possible.
Okay.
Noted, okay. Um. Yes, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, and that brings us to communication from board members.
Thank you. Um, so, to add on to the one more thing that's going on this month, apparently it's National Bike Month. So, right, it kicked, I think the city had an event last, uh, Saturday. Um, I attended the NAMI Walk last Saturday, the National Alliance for Mental Health. Um, there was a walk downtown at the, the Great Los Angeles Historic Park, which is right near Chinatown and Dodger Stadium, which I'd never been to in my life, here, many, many years, decades in the city, um, cool park. But they had a wonderful event that brought awareness to, uh, mental health issues, and I know, um, some kids from Norman Aide here at the high school attended as well. Um, uh, and, and there were booths and speakers and, and our, the wonderful Dion, our, um, our city trainer, um, did it, is, he does all of the warmups for NAMI. Well, he's a trainer that, like, yeah, you know, that did, used to do the Lily Bosses Wednesday walks and all that stuff. Rochelle and I used to go on those, I remember. Um, so, so NAMI was great, great guys. We're almost done here, you can really stick it out for five minutes? You get, look at that, they get the contract, they leave.
Yeah.
I love it. I love, we know where you're headed, Zach, good job. Nice, nice meeting you. Anyway, so NAMI's a special cause, um, I was happy to take part of that. Um, and this, cuz, um, Sophia's not here, the only thing I would mention is this, um, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is the middle school play Aladdin.
Yep.
That is going on at B V M S. Um, I'm surprised with all those B V people here, nobody said anything, but. No, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'll be there on Thursday. Um, so, um, check out your local talent here in our wonderful city, thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, I did attend the, uh, B H U S D art show at the Beverly Hills Library upstairs in the auditorium, uh, this week, and it was fantastic.
That's great.
The variety of art exhibited, whether it was little sculptures, paintings on the wall, just such, you know, fun, cute stuff, the kids were amazed to see their own items being exhibited, and it was just, I mean, so many people coming and going. So thank you to everybody for that. Um, and this Thursday night, uh, actually Thursday afternoon, is the tree dedication for Cheryl Katz, who, uh, what's that?
You had her.
Who, I had her, and I would say she was, uh, one of the loves of my life. Um, and she was a math teacher at Horseman. And so, I just welcome the community to honor someone who had such an impact on so many of us. And I dare say, uh, Rochelle, correct me if I'm wrong, that she may be taught longer than you.
Who's that?
Cheryl. Oh, I'm, I stand corrected, the one and only. Um, and so, I think it's gonna be a special afternoon, and I'll look forward to seeing anybody else there who can make it. Thank you to B H E F for facilitating that.
Well, I have a rather long list, uh, unfortunately. Um, or fortunately, I was very busy. The, uh, I attended the parent university at, uh, Horseman School this week, the speaker was Patty Fitzgerald. And she's a, a very well-known, uh, uh, person on the subject of sexual harassment. And she spoke about the warning signs that you can, uh, see to try to figure out some tricky people who try to lure children and so on, and she went through a whole litany of them, and she was very, very good and very dynamic. Spoke without any notes or anything, and she's well-known, she speaks to kids at homes and so on, and it might be something that, that, uh, parents, uh, to bring, bring her back again and have her speak to the kids too. Um, and right after that, I ran out and went to the pop concert at, um, it's, uh, the Saban Theater, and, uh, the music, the orchestra, and Mr. Smith with the Madrigals, and it's beginning, uh, of a great program, they collaborated together. And then the next night, I went to see the Madrigals themselves that performed at the church on, um, Santa Monica Boulevard. Um, I also attended the Horseman Carnival, it was very festive, I had a great time there that afternoon. I did attend the reunion of the former staff members at El Rodeo. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go to the Hawthorne one, because I had a previous event that I had to take care of at the synagogue, so I didn't get to go to that one, but it was, I, I was really sad that I couldn't, because I've spent so many years there, and it means a lot to me, that school, and I'm really sorry that it's not there. I had, again, attended, um, I'm going to attend the Aladdin performance this week, I think I'm going Thursday night. I attended the art show at the, um, Beverly Hills Library, I only have one comment about it. I couldn't see the pictures that were that high, because I couldn't deal.
They were.
I wish they wouldn't have put them so high, but, but there were so many that they had to, it was, there was so much variety, it was, it was wonderful to see it. And, um, I did attend last night the, um, Laxa Meeting, uh, the speaker was Al Merat Chucci. And he is putting out A B Bill two four seven, which is going to be a state school bond facilities measure. And it has to do with, uh, if we can, uh, I mean, I, we don't have, we're not going to, I don't think, but if you get a bond measure from five million, they will, there's state matching funds for the five million, so you get a ten million dollar bond, so you could go up to fifteen million, I believe. I'm not sure if that's the maximum, but whether we would ever go for another bond, I doubt it, so. But that was, that was the subject, and he talked a little bit about that. But, all kidding aside, I would like to ask you, Dr. Breggy, with June coming up and, and the subject of the, the L B, L G B T Q Prime flag, do we have anything in our resolution that says where the flag should fly?
So the, the resolution actually, um, says that, uh, the school district will fly the pride flag during June. It, um, it doesn't specifically state where, it says that, that it will be, um, flown at, at each school. It'll be.
So, we have the option of not flying it under the American flag, which is what I am really against. I mean, that personally for me, I do not like to see that flag fly underneath the American flag. So if I can fly it anywhere else, and I'm just speaking for myself.
Mm-hmm.
I, I support the movement, and I support the L G B T Q Prime program completely. And, and, but I don't want the flag, I'll put it, I think that each school might have their own choice of where they wanna put it, maybe? And, and fly it very prominently, but not under the American flag. Uh, I think that flag is reserved for the American people.
Yeah, so, I mean, uh, we can certainly let each school decide where they, uh, wanna fly, uh, you know, where, where to place it. And, um, that's, that's possible, we could absolutely do that.
Well, I don't wanna be the one to dictate, I just feel that I, I don't know how the other board members feel, but that's how I feel.
Yeah, I'm just stating from the perspective of, uh, it doesn't specifically say where, it just says that, um, you know, that it will be, it will be flown at, at, the pride flag will be displayed, yes, at each school.
Rochelle, let me ask you a question, I just wanna make sure I understand you. You're just speaking to the American flag hanging on the flag pole on its own prominent.
That's right.
And so, we, assuming that there's agreement, then that same pride flag, for example, could be hung in, on another flag pole, or as a banner, or something else? That you're not speaking to that, you're just saying that.
I'm only questioning.
The American flag should be prominent on its own.
Where it would fly.
I wasn't here at the time, so I'm just trying to confirm.
And I just looked, it, so to just confirm, it's, it's, that it's displayed at each school site.
That's what the resolution says?
Yes.
It should be displayed?
Yes.
Okay, and does it say, um, what item, meaning is it something in support of Pride Month? Or does it specify it should be a, a flag? I just don't know, I'm not familiar with it.
It says, uh, display, um, a rainbow flag at each school and facility within the Beverly Hills Unified School District.
Do we fly the California flag in front of the district on the same pole as the American flag? Do we?
I don't think that we do.
It's just the American flag?
Is it, are, are there two?
There's two flag poles?
No, there's one flag pole.
Right, right, it's a flag pole, it's not an American flag pole.
I remember when I was going to school there, it was, when I went to California. It made California flag.
Yeah, I think I. But I think. Only so much to, oh, attachments, okay.
Right, but I think what Mrs. Marcus is saying is that not to have it underneath the American flag.
You're saying nothing shall be flown on that flag pole except the American flag?
Or the state of California, if you wish to do that.
But no other, so you're saying no other of any sort, nationality?
I don't wanna set a precedent, so no other flag.
Okay, I don't know if this is a voting, or if this goes.
It can't be.
No, it's, it would just be discussion direction, so.
No, and it sounds like the resolution does not specify one has to take a flag pole, and so. and so I think that's your prerogative, I think. It sounds like it's not, right, we got it. So it doesn't sound like it has to be on a flagpole. Are you saying it should be formally prevented? It, it does, I believe it does not, it does not say it has to be on the flagpole.
It says displayed.
It says displayed. So. No.
I have it, I have it, I just looked.
Rochelle, I know where you're coming from, just considering current state of affairs and flags becoming paramount, but I also think that there's a, you know, what I'm hearing is still a strong desire to support, um, in the month of June.
Right.
Appreciate it, and I think that, um, it looks like from my, I, I had the pleasure of going around, um, BVMS, um, relatively recently and I saw that there surprisingly were some displays in certain areas of it and I thought, wow, okay. So I think that the, the, let's see, the commemoration is there, um, even in subtle ways maybe that isn't necessarily June. Personally, I, I am not uncomfortable with what you're suggesting. Um, and I appreciate you saying that it's not that you're not in support of such thing, I, I, I do appreciate that. So I think that's something that I'm, I wouldn't, you know, necessarily say, no way, I disagree with you. I, I'm not saying that. So, I mean, it's a, a larger issue, but I, I can appreciate and you have respectfully shared this with me before, so. Okay, so should we move on with our comments, or is anything further you want to?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Okay, okay. Um, just very briefly, I did have the privilege, as I said, to look at a science lab relatively recently at BVMS, um, and I was personally escorted by Ms. Castanon. And I was just so, it was so mind-boggling what I saw. I was so impressed with the depth of what was presented to these kids. It was sheep's brains. But I remember in sixth grade, it was just like the brain and that's it and you had one and all you, everyone got around and looked, everyone, okay, so each, each triad or, or pair of two, each had their own brain, but they took it a step further. I, I think it's incredible, they each had an MRI of each brain, they practically named the, the sheep. And it had, are you ready for this? It had, it had a, um, a snapshot of a tumor that was in each of the brains that came to the school. Did you hear that? There was, there was a tumor in each specimen and based on where it was located and their understanding of anatomy, they had to cut it out with a scalpel. And so I went to different, you know, different areas and, and I saw that they were taking out this tumor and they were making all sorts of extrapolations and hypotheses and it was like, oh my goodness. And also I just thought to myself, you know, this, everything just seemed to be absolutely right. There was, there was ample, um, space in the classroom, every single person was, um, armed with the right tools, everyone was, um, animated, there was vocabulary, there was writing, there was everything that I thought represents educational excellence and I was just very happy and it didn't even smell that bad and no one fainted, no one fainted either. So I was very grateful and, um, thank you. And I just was happy to see that.
What grade was it?
Oh, this was, uh, eighth grade, right?
Yeah, it was the STEM medical, so.
STEM medical, okay. STEM, okay. Last, I just want to say, I also went to the art exhibit at the library and I agree, it was incredible. And I'm also, count myself very lucky, uh, that at this district, we have funds dedicated to arts. So we are actually so lucky to have art instructors who are, you know, given full, um, what's the word? Funding, whereas in some of the schools in LA, right, they, the, the homeroom teacher is supposed to, you know, do an art lesson and it's just not the same quality. You take someone, right, and music too, you know how lucky we are? Right, it's not like when we were like with the recorders in the eighties, you know? It's like they, it's something that the homeroom teacher has to kind of do. It's nothing like the quality of someone who has a master's degree in art or music and is there to teach. And, and to my understanding, it wasn't PTA funds necessarily, it wasn't money that had to be raised, it was there because people know that for educational excellence, you can't ignore the arts. And that is another thing that makes our, um, district excellent. So, thank you. With that, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, thank you.
Great, thank you.